I call to order a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Phyllis, roll call.
Chairperson Bob McCool.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Commissioners fellow sergeant here Jerry Malia.
Here.
Jason Reese.
Here.
Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Whitty. Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Attorney Dan Harvey.
Here.
All right, we're going to start with public comment on a consent agenda which is just our minutes. Are any non-agenda items? I know most people are here for the main event, but if you have something to say outside of the public comment, feel free to, or outside of the public hearing, come on up.
Good evening. Good evening, Ken Lish, 1326 South Idalia Court. First, two things tonight. First and foremost, I want to say thank you guys as a group for taking on the Northwest Subarea Plan. I've been watching all of your meetings and I truly appreciate all the time and effort that you guys are putting in to work with the contractor to make sure that that's done right. It's an important project and I appreciate the heavy lift in trying to get it done. So first, thank you. Second, this actually might be more directed towards Stephen. I'm the chair of the Open Space Committee and will be presenting in front of the town board at their upcoming meeting regarding the Hodgson-Harris Reservoir Environmental Impact Study. And one of the things that will be valuable to us as background information is what the status is of the application that's been submitted on the Zaharias property. So I was wondering if there's any information you can share on that.
Sure, I'll give you a status update. We had an application submitted in January and we did our first review last month just due to the amount of development applications that we're currently juggling and gave them comments, I want to say, a week or two ago, and that's kind of where it's at. So it's sitting with them and we'll get a resubmit. The current applicant can attest that they had a few rounds of submissions as well, so that's fairly common, and we'll just process it. And it gets scheduled once we have a complete application that we're ready to take to the Planning Commission, so.
Excellent. Appreciate it. Thank you guys very much.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Thanks. Seeing as there's none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes of the March 20th, 2018, and April 4th, 2018, meeting minutes, and I'll entertain a motion to approve, or just know if there are any changes that I needed.
No changes.
No changes.
Get a motion from?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reese. All right, all in favor? Unanimous?
All right, the next agenda item is a public hearing and adoption of the resolution recommending approval of a planned unit development or PUD amendment to rezone the Anderson property from Residential Activity and Employment Center, which is an RAC zoning, to residential, 1B, and also a preliminary and final plat to create 62 residential lots, five outlots, seven tracks, and three acres of public right-of-way, and a final plat site plan, or an FPSP, to develop this area with 31 duplex buildings, or 62 units. So we're going to open the public hearing. We have proof of publication. Stephen, do you have a presentation? Does staff have a presentation?
I do. So I'll start with the presentation. Phyllis, can I get you to turn off the light? Thank you.
I'm going to just add to the record real quick. I just want to acknowledge that as staff, I've worked with the applicants in previous jurisdictions, but I don't feel like that should predetermine my ability to review this application in any way, and I felt prepared to review, partially.
Okay. Thank you.
Stephen Williams, Town Staff. As stated, tonight's development application involves a PUD or a zoning amendment, a preliminary and final plat, as well as a final plat site plan for filing 12 within Rock Creek Ranch. The images on the screen are photographs of the same product that the developer recently constructed in Lewisville, northwest of 95th and South Boulder Road, kind of near the Steel Ranch development. The representatives of Boulder Creek Neighborhoods are here tonight to have a presentation of their own. Our Public Works Director, Alex Aronello, is also here, and he'll provide a brief overview of kind of the transportation considerations that have gone on in this area over recent history. So we'll turn it over to Alex after my presentation, and then we'll turn it over to Boulder Creek Neighborhoods. The subject property is located south of US 36, west of South 88th Street, and north of the Meadowbrook subdivision within Rock Creek Ranch. The property also abuts the southeast corner of the Superior Town Center, which is now more commonly known as Downtown Superior. The first aspect of this proposal involves the PUD or zoning amendment. It's a 21.66 acre property that's currently designated as Regional Activity and Employment Center within the Rock Creek Ranch. PUD, RAC zoning, is the highest commercial zoning designation within this PUD and allows for commercial and employment uses intended to serve the region, as well as building heights up to 120 feet. Because residential uses are not among the listed uses within RAC zoning, the applicant is proposing to rezone the area to R1B, residential 1B, to accommodate the duplexes proposed. R1B zoning is the closest related zoning classification within the RC PUD. The applicant has prepared the standard PUD document shown here to document this request, and consistent with town practice, staff is required that both the standard and zoning requirements for R1B, as well as what the applicant is requesting in terms of setback heights, et cetera, be illustrated on this plan sheet. The proposal is largely conforming with R1B zoning, but does include a few exceptions. And in addition, the proposal is also proposing to be more restrictive density-wise than the allowance within R1B affords. So we'll zoom in on a few of those tables on that plan sheet here. Boulder Creek is proposing the 31 duplexes for a total of 62 units. This would yield a density of roughly three units per acre, where the R1B zone district allows eight units an acre. The structures would range in size from 1,600 to 3,100 square feet and stand approximately 32 feet tall, where walkout basements are afforded, but most elevations would range between 28 and 30 feet in height. The proposed setbacks are as follows. Standard front setbacks to garage faces are 20 feet. Front setbacks to side-loaded garages are 12. Standard side setbacks are 5 feet. Side to street setbacks are 10 feet, and the rear setback is 15 feet. This PUD is a little complicated because it doesn't address setback requirements for anything other than single-family homes. It addresses setbacks related to rights-of-way and open spaces, and there are a few exceptions to those standards that are actually being proposed. And they relate to the rear setback at 15 feet and the side setback at 5 feet, where the standard within the Rock Creek PUD is 20 feet from open spaces. So where the PUD is silent, the zoning table also contrasts the single-family home requirements against their proposal. As such, the 12-foot front setback from the side-loaded garage is contrasted against the 20-foot setback that's required for single-family homes. The final plat site plans, final plat site plan sheets, which I'll discuss shortly, actually illustrate where these changes are, so we'll kind of go over those requests when we get to those sheets. As detailed in staff's memo for this rezoning proposal, Rock Creek Ranch has developed differently than was originally envisioned in 1987, when the PUD was adopted, and the property does not benefit from direct access to US 36 as was envisioned when this document was created. The proposed zoning is generally viewed as more compatible with the surrounding area, which is also zoned R1B, both to the south and to the west, and the development, the residential development is more, also more compatible than the current commercial zoning that's allowed. The final plat site plan aspect of this proposal details how this 21.66 acre parcel is proposed to be divided into the 62 outlots comprising 7.8 acres, five public, 62 development lots, excuse me, comprising the 7.88 acres, five outlots comprising 8.5 acres, seven privately-owned tracks covering 2.16 acres, and just over three acres of right-of-way. These plat sheets also detail the proposed purpose, ownership, and maintenance responsibilities for each tract and lot, with the tracks being maintained by the developer and the outlots being dedicated to the town for a variety of drainage and access purposes. The 21-acre development is illustrated here. It was broken up into four plan sheets within this replat proposal. I've rearranged them here so you can see it in its entirety. The proposed configuration relies on the extension of South Coal Creek to the north to access their proposed residential street, which is Lantern's Lane. Lantern's Lane is decided to terminate both to the west and to the east in cul-de-sacs, with an additional emergency access being afforded to the south to get emergency responders more direct access from 88th Street. As designed, Coal Creek would be extended, could be extended north to provide a connection to the town center, as illustrated here. Staff has also worked, and this was actually contemplated in the 2012 comprehensive plan as well as the 2014 transportation plan. So this is just something we want to step back and acknowledge that this is kind of the basis for the discussion. Neither Planning Commission nor the Board has formally considered this extension since those times, and we understand that the public is largely here tonight to talk about the connectivity of these streets. And so I just want everyone to understand that this is the first time Planning Commission and the Board will get to provide some new direction on whether or not they still want this street to extend to the north, or whether or not they'd prefer some alternative access options, which we've afforded the latitude for this development to also accommodate. So we'll get into that here in a little bit. Lots are shown in size to range from roughly 5,000 square feet to just under 7,900 square feet, and platted at various widths and depths with the variability really related to the topography, as well as like the curve linear nature of the street and the cul-de-sacs that are proposed at each end. Easements have been established on all front and rear property lines for utilities, with some rear easements also platted for drainage, where shared driveways are proposed. This plat establishes shared access easements, which we'll get into later, but it allows for 16-foot wide access for each resident to use the full width of a driveway to get ingress and egress to their homes where we have side-loaded garages. These plan sheets also collectively illustrate the 16-foot platted trail access. So there's a social trail that currently exists in this, through this neighborhood, and we are formalizing that through this proposal, and the applicant has agreed to construct it according to Rock Creek standards. The cover sheet for the final plat site plan is shown here. It reflects the current standards for development and includes the appropriate certificates, data tables, and sheet index. The development tables largely mirror what we saw on the PUD amendment, clarifying the proposed setbacks, building heights, parking spaces, minimum lot sizes, and maximum lot coverage proposed. There are a few clarifications that staff requested. For example, this plan sheet clarifies that four parking spaces will be afforded for every unit, and the PUD couches it a little differently, but four parking spaces will be afforded, so it's just cleaner and clearer to refer to everything a little bit more consistently. And that's one of the changes, but those are kind of like the minor changes that are still needed to be made through this application. The applicant's contact site plan is reflected here. It illustrates the vehicular connections that were outlined in staff's summary of the plat. It also illustrates that detached sidewalks are proposed for each right-of-way, so they're proposed on the north and south side of Lantern's Lane, as well as on the east and west side of Coal Creek Drive. So are bike lanes. Bike lanes are proposed on each side of Coal Creek Drive, and then they connect to the regional trail that cuts through this area. The emergency vehicle access here is shown again on the east side, providing access only for emergency vehicles from the cul-de-sac back down to 88th Street. North of this development, there's also a proposed connection for the trail to get out to the trail within tract H in the town center, and the application also includes cross-sections for Coal Creek, Lantern's Lane, and a potential right-of-way here, which would be extension of Promenade Drive. This application includes all the relevant overall and partial site plans. This is a standard practice. The overall plan shown here is just to see how everything has been coordinated comprehensively. The partial plan sheets provide better detail and kind of clarify the individual lot development more clearly. For instance, here where those shared driveways are proposed, so every set of duplexes will have one direct entry garage and one side-loaded garage, and then between the two sets of duplexes, they'll share a driveway with side-loaded garages. This design has a number of benefits. It reduces the number of driveway cuts along Lantern's Lanes by 25%. It also has the added benefit of having each duplex appear as a single, single-family home, or an individual single-family home, because you're only seeing one driveway, and that'll be a little bit more clearly illustrated on the elevations. This plan sheet also reflects the alignment of an eight-foot-wide concrete trail that was mentioned as an easement earlier, but that trail will be, it's a dirt trail now, it'll be improved as a concrete trail with a crossing stamped concrete getting back, and then this additional plan sheet. Oops. We'll go over there. Shows the continued connection all the way out to the access, to the emergency access easement, so that trail will continue as a paved asphalt trail, getting you back down to 88th Street. The tracks designated for open space are highlighted here in yellow to kind of, the tracks designated for common space, so the privately-owned tracks are shown here. They've generally been designed to help separate the private units from public open space. There's a few exceptions here and here where that was not achievable, because we're trying to keep the alignment of the current social trail, which is also kind of just enforced or, we don't have a lot of latitude to go any further south because of the drainage that exists to the south. So there's a drainage swell here that eventually empties out into the pond. So this is 88th Street here, and this is that access up. So there's an existing drainage pond here, and that's where all the drainage flows. So that's part of the reason why it's designed as it is. But in general, the outlots are shown in white still, and those are all going to be dedicated to the public, whereas the developer will retain the tracks and eventually transfer those over to the HOA. The eastern half of Lantern's Lane is similarly designed. The private tracks shown here separate these units from public open space or public outlots. In this case, this outlot is shown as future Promenade Drive, to clarify that we have a 60-foot width here. In order to build that right-of-way, should Planning Commission and the town board prefer this connection or prefer it to be built in addition to Coal Creek extending through, those are kind of the options. The other thing that this site plan shows is the length of the sound wall, which starts here on outlot or tract D and extends north to just north of lot six here. So it's a 935-foot, I think, sound wall that'll stand 10 feet tall, and we'll have illustrations of it here. So this is, the sound wall was designed based on a noise analysis, a traffic noise analysis off of US 36, and that concluded that we needed this sound wall in order to bring decibel levels down to the recommended levels for residential development. It will have the added benefit of reducing existing decibel levels for residents on Snyder and Stoneham by one to three decibels after it's constructed. So this is the first of the elevations that are proposed. There's three different duplex buildings. The plan sheets are organized by building configuration and include details on two different finish options as well, because some of the units will have walkout basements. This plan sheet illustrates the Equinox model on the left and the Triumph model on the right. The front elevation is shown on the bottom, so this elevation kind of clarifies how this duplex unit will appear as very similar to a single-family home, where you only see one garage door from the street. The other garage door will face to the right-side elevation and be apparent from that perspective. And this is the other side elevation on the top and the rear elevation on the bottom. They've also provided a contrast to kind of clarify what the garden level, so where we have grade change, we'll have a garden level rear elevation that'll be slightly taller, and where we have more grade change, we'll have more of a walkout type of situation where the, this is where you'll have the tallest elevation on the rear, and these are only contemplated on the south part of the unit, south of Lantern's Lane, where the topography allows it. The other aspect of their application for their floor plans is illustrated here. This is more or less a lot plan, where it shows how you have the different setbacks. You got 20 feet, the ability to park two cars in front of a garage, normal, like normal, and then here's the side-loaded. You have two-car garage or two-car surface parking spaces just to the side of the garage, as well as the two-car garage space. And then you get half of a, half of the driveway will occur on your property and the other half will occur on your neighbor's property. That's why we need to access easement that was established or will be established through the plat. But this also indicates the elements, such as the patios that have been afforded. There's trellises off of garages and then trellises over most of the front patios. And then in the back, there's also covered patios proposed, as well as exposed at-grade patios. They've also given us color elevations to clarify the different color and materials that they're proposing. We required them to provide those perspectives of the photos of the units in Lewisville that are, I think, give a little truer representation of the colors and a little more detail than some of these two-dimensional drawings do, but you can see that there's a variety of, there's a generous amount of stone on each elevation, particularly the front, and then there's a variety of color options, and then there's a variety also within the roof pitches and peaks to distinguish these units from one another. In total, there's nine color schemes proposed among the 31 buildings. The applicant's landscape plan for tracks, outlots, and right-of-ways are illustrated here. The standard irrigated seed, native irrigated seed mix for Rock Creek will be installed throughout the tracks and outlots as ground cover consistent with other parts of Rock Creek. Trees and shrubs are also proposed throughout with a heavier amount proposed to the south. So they're proposed, you know, on the north side and on the west side as well, but it becomes denser south of the trail. So the focus of the landscape plan really is to enhance this existing trail and also provide some separation from the existing development to the south. They also provided individual plans for the, each lot, the development lot, and you can see that there's trees incorporated on each, on each private residence, as well as landscape beds, and then there are street trees proposed within the right-of-way. Cobble between the, between the units, and then mulched landscape beds in the back, and then you transition to an irrigated seed mix or a sod before you get into the open-space areas that are adjacent. They've also provided several details. This is one that requires an exception from our current standards, which don't allow for non-shielded light, light sources. This is kind of why it's called Lantern's Lane. This is their kind of trademark, and you can see it from the images, but the lighting levels on their plan sheets aren't bright at all. And here, this is more of an aesthetic feature and very subdued light source, but that's the fixture there. And then these are the fixtures for the residences. They look identical. One's a little bit larger than the other. They're proposing an iron fence in their front yard, and they're proposing both sitting walls, as well as planters that are made out of this concrete and stone that'll match the stone that's being used on the house. And then the street light is the same that you've seen for the town center. So these are the photographs that illustrate their development a little bit clearer, and you can see those lantern sources, as well as the rock finishes and the gates, the pergolas and that type of stuff. Staff is recommending approval of both aspects of this proposal. They were separated into two different applications, because the rezoning will eventually require an ordinance from the Board rather than a resolution, which is what replat and final plat site plan will require. So you have two recommendations to make a motion on tonight, and we will quickly kind of go over the various circulation options, and I'll hand this over to Alex to talk a little bit more detail about transportation, circulation in the area. So as this is currently drafted, it would allow for connectivity straight through to the town center, having Coal Creek extend. And then the gray here is shown as emergency access only, but the option exists for both connections to go through, and this EVA, this, so this road would never connect or could never connect straight over here, because this street would change in classification. So it would still remain an EVA access to the cul-de-sac, but you would allow for a more direct access on Promenade to 88th Street as a secondary, secondary option. The other option would be to not have Coal Creek connect and just have Promenade connect. We'll get into a little bit more detail about the street sections and how this is a little bit wider over here. It allows for a more generous streetscape, the two bike lanes than what would be afforded over here. It gets constrained by the detention pond that exists, so it becomes a little bit more narrow along the southeast corner over there. And then the other option would be for no connection to occur to the town center at all. This to become a landscaped area, as well as this, and Coal Creek just to serve as access to the 62 units that are proposed, and for the EVA access to remain just EVA to the east of the development. So I will turn this over to Alex.
Alex Aronello, Director of Public Works and Utilities. I don't know how I got to speak here tonight before the fireworks some communities. Just wanted to give you a little update on some of the planning that's been going on for some time in the, is this on? That's been done in this area of Rock Creek Ranch, kind of north of Rock Creek Parkway and west of 88th, and we've had a number of discussions over the years when the town center came in about whether to make a connection to 88th or to connect to Coal Creek. We've worked with developers over the years about potential connections. Over the last two or three years, we've worked with the Waldona area in terms of shutting it off or making connections and so forth, and we've recently installed speed humps on Waldona to try to slow the speeds and discourage cut-through traffic. This is a plan going back, I think, to 1995 or '96. Just put it up there if you can, there we go. Bear with me. Here's 88th and Rock Creek Parkway, and a collector is shown connecting to Coal Creek and also connecting to 88th. So those two connections historically have been around for a number of years. Let's see, go back. So this was the transportation plan that was adopted in 2014. Again, we had, the town center had come in. We had talked about connecting Campus Drive over into the town center, a connection to Coal Creek Drive, not shown here, because these are only collectors, was a possible local connection from Missouri here to 88th. So it was shown on that plan. So on Waldona, just recently, we went through a whole lot of serious public meetings, got a lot of input about what to do, and the town board decided to install three speed humps. We've done some traffic counts before and after the speed humps went in to try to see if. We've done some traffic counts before and after the speed humps went in to try to see what was, what was happening with the traffic. And actually, traffic went up a little bit on the west end. I think that's because the cul-de-sac's over there, instead of wanting to go travel across two or three speed humps, you know, looks like more traffic went to, to east instead of the west. Right in the center, east of Idalia, traffic went up a little bit, but it's kind of stabilized now. And then east of Coal Creek Drive, over by Akron, traffic's about, is about the same before and after the, the speed humps went in. So it's kind of the, and then traffic speeds, you can see down here, the traffic speeds have gone down after the speed humps went in, down to 17.5 miles an hour and supposed to the 25. So at least in some areas, we've had a reduction in, in some of the speeds. Just from an accident perspective, just wanted to show you on 88th, some of the accidents that we've, we've had up here. Did want to also point out, if you see 88th and Shamrock and 88th and Waldona, on 88th Street, we don't have any turn lanes at those two, two intersections. So we, we've continually getting, getting about an, an accident a year at those two, two intersections. And that's a safety problem we want to address at some point. Also what's happening, we've partnered with City of Lewisville to look at options for extending Campus Drive over US 36 into the town center as an option. We've also looked improvements to 88th. And also taking Campus Drive on the east end of the Monarch Campus and extending it out through 96th Street. So we've done a number of traffic projections to see what, what various options would do in terms of traffic projections on, on 88th. And in long range, the projections for 2040 are about 14,000 vehicles per day on 88th. It doesn't vary a whole lot with, with what you do, whether you widen 88th or not and whether you extend Campus Drive to 96th Street. Did want to point out on 88th Street, some of the volumes we've had in 2010, we had a traffic count of 8,500 vehicles per day. In 2015, we measured 10,500, but we were under construction with the DDI. So there may, may have been diversion to 88th. In 2016, we counted 9,400. And in 27, in, in 2017, we, we counted 9,200. Some of the volumes, projections are about 10,000 after, after Anderson goes in and if the Saharius development happens to be approved, then we add that traffic as well. And then the long range, if, if the ConocoPhillips site, if that's, that develops, that'll probably add 3,000 or 4,000 vehicles per day to 88th. That's right at the, the cusp, you know, if you get a 14,000 or 15,000 vehicles per day, you're right at the cusp of whether you need a four lane section or not. So in our current planning, in terms of what we've worked with the developers and even in our, our planning, we're looking at building a section that would have eventual, could have narrow four lane section, you know, maybe four 10-foot lanes and, and bike lanes. But in the immediate future, we could have a buffered bike lane, a wide bike, a bike lane and, and just have a channelized intersections. Just wanted to show you in a middle graphic what we're talking about in terms of, of access if Saharius develops and Promenade is extended. This is the US 36 bridge. We'd have a traffic signal just below the bridge. Waldona would be converted to a three-quarter movement where we would have no left out, but we would provide a, a left turn in. So increase, increase the safety because right now there's no, no left turn lane for Waldona. And then provide a roundabout if Saharius develops. And Waldona traffic would make a left turn around, around the roundabout. And we'd also put a left turn for Shamrock. So that's kind of our access plan for, for 88th. And we've been working with the developers to, to plan for this during the, the course of this development. The applicant's traffic engineer is here and he can fill you in on any specific questions about the, the traffic study that was submitted by, by the engineer. But the 62 lots would generate about 455 vehicles per day during, during a 24-hour period. So if nothing happens and the only access is, is Coal Creek, all that traffic has to go south. Ends up on Coal Creek, there's potential for as many as 180 vehicles per day that will be added to, to Waldona. And Coal Creek down with the 21, 25, there's about 1,700 vehicles or so today. So that would be added. The traffic engineer also looked at what would happen in the long range while these connections were made, what would happen on, at the various points. One of which, for example, is Waldona, which is location eight. Back then, we had a 1,200 ADT count. They figured that by these connections, we would actually drop the base traffic down by 300 because the, the surrounding traffic has another way out. They can go north on Coal Creek and get to 88th a different way. So you may drop it by, by having the connection with Coal Creek to Promenade and having Promenade going out to, to 88th Street. You would add some traffic from, from this development, but then that result would be about 250 drop in traffic by, by having all those connections. Lisa, you have it?
Sorry, I'm just trying to look at what happens on Coal Creek Drive.
Yeah, Coal Creek Drive is down in number seven there. Yeah, it would be an increase of a couple, about 250. So we looked at all these permutations and what the, what we tried to do, working with the developers, is provide options that we, we thought made sense. We were really concerned that if Lantern, if this was the only access, we'd have a local street with back out driveways, but then if we made a connection, we'd have collected traffic right on a local street, another Waldona situation. And we wanted to avoid that. The developer was willing to work with us to extend, to at least provide for a connection to the north. And if Lantern, if Promenade is ever extended, we can make that connection. This is an addition, decision that has to be made today, but it's, it's there if we, when we get into the planning down the road. And we have all these numbers that we can look at. We can also update once this development is built and see what the, what the traffic is in the area. If there's any questions specifically about traffic and traffics, the applicant's traffic engineer is here as well.
Couple of questions. How does the design of that access point at 88th function with that curve in there from visibility and safety? Is that, is that going to be a functional intersection?
It's a, yeah, it's a difficult intersection. Much, I think, once we singleize that, then we'll provide a safer way, you know, out to make the left. You know, right now you're coming down at a fairly high rate of speed. The, the site distance meets your typical criteria for the posted speed and a little over the posted speed. But again, you, you have about 600 or 700 feet of, of site distance looking up over the bridge. So it's not the best location for, for an intersection, but we felt that this is probably the, we want an outlet for the town center to get to 88th. We singleize it, we think would be, it would be safe, safe in terms of allowing traffic out. And we, we would provide turn lanes for northbound into Promenade and southbound of, of the Saharius property develops.
Is that all you have for us? Great. Stevenson, are there any more for?
Not for me.
Staff presentation? All right, so it's time for us to have questions for staff based on? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you said there was more. I apologize. I thought you said no.
You can, or I can give you the? You want the keyboard? You can give that to you? I don't think this one's connected. All right, I'll give you the keyboard.
Well, they may, but.
I did have one other question related to Alex's presentation. Sorry that I forgot to ask. Who would pay for the Promenade Drive extension or what mechanism would that be? If, if Planning Commission decides that we want that, is Boulder Creek doing that or is the town doing that later? How would that work?
We would have to revisit that. We'd probably talk to both developer of the town center and then we'd come back to Boulder Creek about their portion. But I think it would probably be split three ways between the town, this developer and then the town center in order to provide their traffic out as well, so.
And is it, is it staff's thought that i- if, if a decision moved forward to, you know, connect 88th and Promenade and Coal Creek to Promenade, that that would all be done as the development is built or sometime down the road? Or what, what's staff thinking?
So it kind of depends on, so that's a tricky thing about this application in terms of when we're going to have a development application for the southeast portion of the town center. We do have a concept plan coming on that, on the 23rd to the board and to you guys actually too. And one of the updates I have to provide today. You're welcome. I just bring that on you. But, um, so they're going to come for a work session on the 23rd to discuss, I can't remember how many acres it is, but it's most of the development blocks in the southeast corner of the town center. So we'll have, and the board will actually benefit from that context because they'll have that before they hear this meeting later on that evening. So it just depends on timing. But if we need to, I mean, the development agreement can be constructed in such a way that they don't build the road yet, they pay their portion of the, the money or whatever. They're, and the way that this is designed is that they've created, right now it's an outlaw. But if you guys and the board decide that it needs to be rightaway, we change that designation to rightaway and, and plot it as rightaway. Otherwise, it's plotted as an outlaw to be dedicated to the town for our future determination. And so if, if that road isn't necessary at this time or deemed not to be necessary yet, then it could be constructed later. And we would just be in control of redesignating it from an outlaw to a, a public rightaway.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Did that answer the question?
Yep. So are there any more questions for staff before we move on to the applicant's presentation? All good? All right.
Good evening, Commissioner. Thanks for coming on July 3rd. I appreciate it. Help keeping, keep moving our project along here. I appreciate your time tonight. My name is Mike Cooper with Boulder Creek Neighborhoods, 712 Main Street, Lewisville, Colorado. I'm here representing Boulder Creek. We have our consultant team here from Civil Resources, Norris Design and LSC, representing the civil, planning, landscape, architecture and traffic engineering trades. If you have any questions, technical questions for them, they're here to, to field those questions. I believe you're all familiar with Boulder Creek. We're building at Calmonte on Colton Ave and, and the Caslin. We're finishing up the town home portion of that development. I believe we have our last, last home that we're selling there and we're embarking on the single-family detached portion of that project now. Sales are, are going along strongly and we're excited to be there and to be here in Rock Creek as well. You're probably familiar with us, but we are primarily, we try to avoid the term patio home builder or active adult builder. We, we brand ourselves as a low maintenance lifestyle builder. We don't just cater to active adults. We build a wide variety, wide variety of products, town homes, town homes, paired homes, single-family detached homes, fourplexes. Most of our homes feature main floor living. All of our homes feature low maintenance on the community. So that's, that's what really distinguishes us from just about every other builder in town. We are the only 100% low maintenance builder. We primarily build north of I-70, Boulder County and the northern Front Range. We've been building for about the last 10 to 12 years. As I mentioned, we have a whole host of different products that we build. We summarize our brand of low maintenance lifestyle in what we call lifefulness. And the key tenets to the lifefulness is respectful communication to our home buyers, non-typical floor plans, durability and energy efficiency, and again, the low maintenance lifestyle. And the keys to the low main, low maintenance lifestyle is main floor living. Zero step is a key feature in many of our homes that our older buyers really value. Right-sized, efficient floor plans for energy efficiency and they take up less space. High-quality construction and low maintenance for the homeowner, which results in a high level of maintenance for the HOA and results in a quality community. We take all of those values very seriously and our, and it shows in our customer satisfaction. You're familiar with Calmonte. This is our town home, high-end luxury town home product that we got out of receivership during the downturn, finishing that up. And our single-family detached homes, which we've sold probably about five to 10 homes so far out there and continue to plug along. As Steven mentioned, we're proposing what's called our Opportunities Parrot Home Series. This is the Lantern's version, which is kind of an upgraded version of this product that you'll see that we build. We build this in Longmont and a couple of other places around town right now. The Lantern's version is kind of a step up and it's very similar to what you'll see out there at Steel Ranch in Lewisville. If you want to go drive by that, this will be a pretty accurate depiction of what we propose to build out here at Rock Creek. Main level living is key to this product. This is my favorite product that we build. It's just a great, great living space on the main level, about 1,700 square foot. Optional basement, about 1,500 square foot on the lower level. It is one, one level homes. Some of these homes will have garden levels. We won't, don't want to have any walkouts, but probably transition in, in garden level homes on this site. This really does key in on our key buyer of empty nesters and downsizers. This is a very popular product for, for that demographic. I mentioned the optional finished lower levels. The key to this product is, is 360-degree architecture. And you really have trouble distinguishing the front and the, the back of the home on this product. We really paid a lot of attention to detail on all sides of the homes. And that's key to our product in general because we typically don't like to back our homes up to each other. We like to back them up to open space, back them up to sometimes so you can see it from the street. So it's highly visible. We don't usually, like a production home builder, just back them up back-to-back. That's really not what our buyer values. And that's kind of why we like this site. Most of our communities are fenceless communities and that's what we're proposing here. So there's no fenced-in front or backyards, even though you see this little ornamental fence that's not really enclosing, it's more for, for decorative purposes. Steven mentioned three plans, three building types, nine color styles. Steven offered a lot of detail on this. I won't, I won't belabor it too much, but it does kind of read as one home. That's what I like about this product. A lot of roof line and facade articulation, as you can see. And what's, what I really love about this product is there's really large covered porches on the backs, but then there's also some covered spaces on the, on the fronts of the homes. And then plus, we took extra steps on this to add the patios in the front with the arbors and trellises, columns and seat walls to really create a front yard sense of place and really enhance the streetscape for this project. This kind of is a color rendition, I'm kind of showing that. It was kind of hard to read on the black and white version, but it gives you some idea about where the, the patios are in front of the houses, the arbors and trellises and the very ample covered deck and patio spaces. Typically, you won't find home builders at a presentation highlighting the backs of their homes, but as you can see, these are really attractive homes on the rears and the sides as well. And I show this slide because it shows on somehow we'll have the transition where they transition from a patio to a raised deck. And this is a full garden level. So this is kind of the maximum height that you'll see in that site plan submittal. Just to walk you through the context of Rock Creek, this is showing about 700 acres, most of Rock Creek. Downtown Superior is to the north. Zaharius is to the east of us. Our Calmonte project is down here. This is the 21-acre parcel. There is proposed residential up just to the north of us in downtown. Steven went into the specifics of the RAC zoning. I'll talk about that a little bit more later. Commercial, Safeway Anchored Center down here at the southeast. School site, elementary schools is kind of an anchor in the center of the community. Rec center, pool, tennis courts. These are the more manicured, kind of regional parks, more manicured. more manicured parks with lakes and walking paths and playgrounds. And really, what's great about Rock Creek and how it's such a well-planned community is the network of open spaces. And as you'll look at up in the northeast at our site, we will continue that network with our, enhancing our drainageway through our site and kind of getting that connection complete over to 88th Avenue. Probably miles and miles of trails that go through those open spaces. And again, we'll be building out the regional trail to 88th Avenue, the Coal Creek extension here in bike lanes. And then we'll be contributing a portion of the US-36 trail. The timing of when that's built is, remains to be seen. It'll probably be sequenced, I imagine, with the promenade Ave if that's ever constructed. We embarked on this project not leading the entitlements. We were partnering with a commercial developer who was proposing the storage complex. It was a little bit before my time when we got underway with that. We were kind of behind the scenes. But this shows the large, kind of like a one-acre footprint, three-story, 40-foot-high building and a couple incubator storage space buildings. Staff and residents alike, I believe, you kind of put up some resistance to this project for obvious reasons. We took it over and made the entire parcel our product. And slightly different circulation patterns resulted, the two cul-de-sacs in lieu of a planned street through here, which would have obviously connected further down Promenade. Our Coal Creek Ave extension, we are proposing, at least at this point in time, to construct it right to the edge of our property. I don't know if that would ever change, depending on how town board and you decide on how the circulation patterns will end up here. Here's the regional trail connection over to our emergency access lane, which could be a temporary or a permanent situation, depending on how this all shakes out. We'll be enhancing the drainageway through here. And I have another slide that'll show where the sound wall is over here on US-36. So a pretty simple, simple little project, kind of just completing this corner of Rock Creek. Rock Creek requires every parcel to have 45% open space, hence all the green that I previously showed you. It looks like it's probably even more than that throughout the community. But as you can see, providing that 45%, we'll be dedicating this whole drainageway and regional trail down here to the town as part of our dedication via the plat, giving a track through here or outlaw, can't remember which one it's called, for the potential to build out Promenade Drive, if so desired. Or it could be landscaped if not. And this shows, highlights the location of our sound wall. We elected to, we only had to build an eight-foot sound wall, but we elected to bump it up, just working with staff. So this exceeds any kind of federal highway and CDOT standards. We felt it had value to our buyers. So we didn't push back on that. We just raised the wall height a little bit. And that should work. Alex kind of touched on this. I won't go into too much from the transportation portion of the comp plan, I believe. It contemplates a connection of Coal Creek to downtown. And obviously, we are providing the direct connection via Coal Creek Drive. We're reserving space, dedicating an outlaw to the town to potentially connect Promenade through. And then if the town elects, to connect both roads together. We don't see value, from our perspective in Promenade, for our buyers and our community. But we're willing to, you know, go along with the town and whatever the town board decides and Planning Commission recommends shakes out here. So we don't feel that this road is really our responsibility to construct. We'd prefer it not be built, but we'll follow the town's lead in that manner. And this slide just kind of highlights how overall it can shake out. I don't know if this is the current layout or not. I know there's an application in process here on this portion. But it kind of shows out how that could all potentially tie together for maximum connectivity. Zoning is, Stephen had touched upon, per the RAC zoning, which is a little bit dated at this point in time. Now, you can build 120-foot building, as low as 20% open space. So we're obviously building a one-level building, maximum 35 feet and 45% open space. And this is a chart. I won't go into it because I think Stephen adequately covered it, highlighting what we're proposing and how it relates to the town code for duplexes and single-family detached in the Rock Creek PUD. So our setbacks and open space and building heights are all comparable with those zoning regulations. Stephen outlined all the standards for approval. We're meeting all those for the PUD. The final plat site plan, I won't belabor these items. But we are in full compliance with town code. Your staff does a great job in getting into the details of the project. I believe, I don't think we should have to do construction drawings after these are completed. I think we should hand them over to a contractor personally. But we'll still go through that process. But town staff has been great to work with. And we look forward to your recommendation for approval. Thank you.
You have a couple of questions. On the sound wall that's proposed, what is the distance from the sound wall to the rear of those homes that are right along that, that would back up to the sound wall?
Our standard is 20-foot. I know for some of those lots, we were constrained here going from the drainageway, fitting the home in in the street, and then running out of room for that 20-foot. Hence, I think we went down to a 15-foot backyard. But I think they're actually like 17 or 18 feet.
Yeah, the request is for a 15-foot rear yard. But Mike is correct. Most of the ones on the north side are 17 feet or more rear setback to that wall, so.
And so the sound wall being built on this property, would it be more beneficial if, you know, as part of, if the request was made to build Promenade, that the sound wall go on the opposite side of, between Promenade and 36 to provide more of a backyard offset for those locations or for those residents, which then the street would be visible for those residents. But the sound wall is then pushed further away from the houses. So maybe it doesn't feel as enclosed in the backyard.
Well, you hit the nail on the head. We wanted the sound wall in there to, so that there wouldn't be a street out the back. That's an important living space in these homes. And we don't, they don't access the backyard. So it would just be landscaped with rock and trees and plants. But on none of our community, well, I shouldn't say none. Typically, we don't offer access off the back of the house. We prefer to keep it all nice and maintained and clean. So restricting that from 20 to 18 feet really has no effect on the homeowner, the livability of that space. So that's why we prefer that the wall defines that back lot line and right of way. It'll offer a lot more value in terms of sound mitigation, having it closer to the home right there. So I believe it lowers the decibel level about 10, eight to 10 at this point, like at the base of the wall. And about one to three decibels back here for the existing neighborhood. So yeah, we studied that. We looked at, you know, would it be better out there? And the way that we, staff and we looked at it, drawing this cross-section through there, that was the most logical, most logical spot for it. If you've seen it in a cross-section form, I think you'll agree that it would, it does make sense.
They also provided additional landscaping for the, so they have three landscape plans for their internal, their lots. And they show the landscaping plan for where the units will be a little bit closer to this public right of way and how that'll transition. And then they also show more densely landscaped rear yards to kind of soften that wall for their residents. And then we're requiring, you know, some landscaping on the opposite side of that wall for either just, you know, to break up that wall from views from whether or not it ends up being US-36 or whether or not we actually have a right of way go through here. So, perfect.
So I do have a question for you as well, Mr. Cooper. And that's a good segue into my question. In any of the areas that are landscaped, and you're proposing some open areas and some greenery and trees and things like that, would there be any room in this plan for a small park or a gathering place? Even one of the areas that is landscaped for picnic benches or anything like that?
Yeah, there could be certainly an opportunity for something like picnic benches or a little plaza area. This, our demographic does not, does not need like a totlot or any playground and those types of features. I believe there's opportunities to put more benches and amenities like that. But there's really not a lot of space with the drainageway takes up a lot of that space in the trail. So there's some opportunities in an area like here, potentially, to do smaller, smaller-scale park amenities, like you had mentioned. But there's really no other spots really for like a true park area. And kind of that's why I went through the, you know, the whole Rock Creek and how this works into the framework of the entire community. I was trying to tell that story about how, you know, how this area is planned. And really, our buyer doesn't, unless they don't value it. The key feature that they like is the walking trails. And so really, for our buyer, all of our, we try to put as many trails as we can around the periphery of the project just to provide that amenity. That's the number-one thing that our buyer values. Occasionally, we get forced to build little parks and totlots that don't make any sense. Or maybe a grandchild comes over and visits or something like that. And we do that. But that's typically not what our buyers value.
So a small sitting area or something like that along the trail would be possible?
Absolutely, yeah.
Just a quick follow-up. Stephen, do you know where the closest park is to this?
I don't offhand. There's, you know, he had a slide. Purple Park's the closest, like, established park. And then, you know, the...
Riverbend Park.
This Riverbend is here as well. With the actual amenities, it's Purple Park. We, I mean, just to give you a little bit of context on that, the focus here was on this dedication and getting them to make, it's a fairly lengthy open space, you know, improvement. And then it's, you know, as everyone's familiar with, you know, this is not landscaped or maintained currently to the same degree that everyone, that all the other trails and open space within Rock Creek are. So that, that's a fairly extensive improvement that they're proposing to connect this whole area. And then it's also extended with trees on the west side, getting them back down to 88th Street. So that was the focus of this. The other thing, I guess, I just kind of clarify is that with the focus of us trying to kind of maintain our options, it's hard to, it was hard to like clarify that, oh, there's space here for a park when a road might go through. Or, you know, we dedicated this as, or clarified that this needed to be right of way. But if that goes away, then there's maybe some space in between those units or somewhere a little bit further to the north that might be possible. But there is a lot of grade, both coming down from the west to the east here and coming north, north to south to work with as well.
Okay, thanks. Anthony, do you have more questions?
I was going to say that this is a product that has been sorely needed or sorely missed. We've actually lost, I believe, quite a few residents who have left town, good residents who have left town because there was a lack of this product. So I appreciate seeing this product come forward and...
Mr. Cooper, thanks for your presentation. I was speaking with some residents earlier this evening about what Commissioner Reese was just mentioning. Was, has there been any thought from Boulder Creek Neighborhoods about affordable housing? That was one of the questions they asked me.
Yeah, this site, so back it up a little bit. So this was originally an RAC zoning, commercial property, fairly intense, you know, storage complex. So it's got a fairly significant land price to it. As this shifted from mixed-use to residential, you know, the value got adjusted a little bit, but not tremendously. So it would be challenging for us to provide any sort of even attainable product out here that's commercially viable, given land development costs and land costs. We do build that type of product in various parts of town. We try to build that in a lot of places. And it's cost prohibitive due to fee structures and water costs primarily. Secondarily is land costs and land development costs. So this, it would not work. We looked at other options on the site, but we think that this is the best product for this area. Thank you.
Thanks for, I just want to say thanks, I think, for working with staff regarding the, providing flexibility for Planning Commission and the residents to weigh in and the board to decide ultimately future connectivity options. So that's challenging from your side. So I appreciate your flexibility in working with that. I have, do you have any concerns? I mean, you, these homes are going to be probably the closest to 36, maybe along the entire corridor. From a public health perspective, from just a marketability perspective, what were your, what things did you take into consideration on that?
Right. So obviously, the plan originally did not have homes along the highway. So we adjusted it and we evaluated not too many different layouts, maybe an altered version of this a little bit. But generally, there's only so much room, as you can see, to lay out the streets and homes. So we took that into consideration. And we do have, you know, these aren't going to be the most desirable homes. Obviously, these, all the rest of the homes back to open space for probably a premium. You have six, 12 homes there that probably will be a little bit discounted. But given that they're one-level and they're on fairly flat grounds, they wouldn't be raised out of the ground like a garden level at all. And it's a 10-foot sound wall. We feel that that's adequately mitigating the proximity to the highway. So they won't have that visual of the highway. So yeah, it's something that we considered. But we think that those will be saleable homes, for sure.
And then, I know you've had neighborhood meetings in the past. Have you had neighborhood meetings related to this concept? What feedback?
We had one, you know, meeting where we noticed, you know, the adjacent neighborhoods. There's probably 200 or 300 notices sent out. Probably about 50 people came. We also met with some homeowners directly who bought the property initially and talked to them. You know, the feedback we got was really supportive of the product. And seeing that is something, a good addition to the diversity of Rock Creek and, I guess, Superior in general, too. Really, that's, you know, we heard issues about traffic and circulation and obviously the promenade. The preference would be for us to just have our access come out on 88th. And we're following the town's lead on how to properly access the site. Obviously, Coal Creek comes right up to our property. It's an envisioned to go through there. So that's where it's logical for us to access. So yeah, we had really good feedback at the neighborhood meeting.
Did you just say you would prefer if lanterns connected directly to 88th? Is that what, is that what I just heard you say?
No, that's what the neighbors were, one comment from a couple neighbors. If you look at the old plan, it went directly out there.
But you're comfortable with this particular configuration from access?
Absolutely.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Okay, so at this point, thank you for the presentation. And now it's time for public comment. Like to come up and talk about this project. Like to come up and talk about this project, give us your thoughts, feedback, any ideas you have. Limit your, we'll talk to about five minutes. We have lights up front here that'll kind of give you guidance. I think yellow, is it a minute? About right, about a minute. And then the red light is to stop, but if you go too long, I'll, I'll jump in and stop you, so. So if you'd like to start public comment, raise your hand, I'll try to pick somebody. Yep, come on up. If you give us your, your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Pat Nissano. I live at 1145 Stonemore Street. And I went to the one meeting that we, that was open to the public for the development. And as I think everybody stated here, everybody is quite supportive of the product because it is sorely needed. And as somebody who is potentially looking at something like that in the future, near future, I think it's a great product. However, I think that there are a couple of questions in my mind about the, the promenade, development of the promenade drive with regard to, one issue I was speaking to someone about is, does the promenade drive have to accommodate, that area have to accommodate any extension of an existing bike trail on the other side of 36? And if it does, does that, would that, and is that bike trail independent of the development of the promenade drive? And again, I'm not quite sure. I, I was, I just found out about that at the meeting that we went to, the first meeting for this development. And this meeting came up kind of quickly and didn't realize that we were not going to get a lot of opportunity to be able to investigate that before tonight. But my understanding is that if a bike trail is required to go along the, the 36, on this side of 36, then there might not be enough room for promenade to go through, might not be a wide enough area. So that would be a question that I have and I don't know that you guys can address that tonight. And, or if the, I'll be at the meeting on the 23rd as well. But I, I'd like you to take that into consideration or I, I don't know if that means, and I'm not quite sure why this has to be done so quickly, that if we can't get the answers to these questions about, I realize that we're not going to get the exact answers to the questions about the, the extensions because nobody really knows what they're going to do right now. But one thing that was brought up was the extension to, the campus drive extension. So what's the status of that? And that has never been, that wasn't ever really talked about by the developer because that would solve a lot of problems for everybody except maybe for the camp, the campus drive. Again, the whole thing going through to the other, to 95th Street is kind of irrelevant, I think, for this, but for some way for the Superior Town Center traffic to get through to 88th. Is it the only way to go through residential? And is there any, if, we want to make sure that we have alternatives and not just to have Coal Creek be the only alternative, the only way through for, for the town center to, to go south. So that, again, that's my concern is that we're, I don't want to cut off any possibility of promenade going through. And one thing that, yeah, we just discussed at the, or was brought up at the other meeting was about them connecting up. And it seems to me the reason that, would appear that maybe the reason that they wouldn't want to connect up to 80, to the, to the street right now and go through to 88th has to do with not being able to build as many townhomes and things like that, which again, I understand that, it's, it's a, it's an economic viability concern for the developer. But I think from a residential perspective, we can't, Coal Creek can't be the only way out for people coming south for, for the town center. So that I think is my biggest concern. So thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Right here on the end? Come on. Yes, yeah, come on up.
Dulcie Brown, 1404 East Waldona Way. I beat a dead horse every time I come to one of these meetings. Can you bring this up just a little bit? Does it go up? So I can see?
That one doesn't, but we could bring something else up if you want to.
That's okay. I can, I can pretend. So it's kind of saying the same thing about Waldona Way as we always say. If they don't do the promenade and they only have...
We, we need to, we need to have you at the microphone so we can catch you on the recording. I apologize.
If they only do, if they don't do the promenade and they only do Coal Creek Drive, that means, okay, now I've got to resituate myself. That's Coal Creek?
This is Coal Creek here. Waldona's right here.
So that means that everybody from town or everybody wanting to go up to that development, they... Town? Sorry. Come here. Waldona Way. That's the only way out on 88th Street. That's what everybody does now and it'll just be more, more exacerbated. And the same thing too. I mean, either, either close off Waldona Way, which I've been talking about for 25 years, or open it all up. Open up the promenade. Open up the Stonemore, Stonemore neighborhood. Open up the neighborhood south of Waldona Way. Have everybody access so it's all alleviated. Just don't have everybody go down Waldona Way. That'll be, that would be very, very bad. The street can't handle it. It was never meant to be a thorough street. That's how it's used. People speed on it, the number of traffic, the, the amount of traffic is horrible. So either close everything off or open it all up. All of it. That's okay. I'd be good with that. Then people wouldn't all be using Waldona Way.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, come on up.
My name is Dave Claycombe. Live on 1199 Snyder Way. So I'm kind of on the far end and I like the idea that they're going to improve some of the trees and different things between the areas. Anyway, I'm in favor of the project. I wrote a note to you folks yesterday in favor. I think it's the idea of people wanting to downsize, just never done anything about that here in Superior. I'm another person thinking about that. A lot of people probably are. Very compatible, I thought, the, the building, the buildings are. I'd seen some things about people concerned about schools and, you know, overload schools, et cetera. If the assumptions correct that Mike made, that I made too, you know, we'll be adding 62 homes, paying taxes for schools without much of an impact on our school system, the way I understand it. These aren't going to be people, I don't think, majority's going to have two kids in every house. You know, this land is going to get developed by somebody eventually. And as you mentioned, we could have a 20-foot high, 120-foot high building there, we could have apartments there, we could have townhomes there. You talk about traffic going down the streets, you talk about what's it look like if we're going into Boulder Valley and, you know, you've got these great big buildings there, big kind of ugly buildings there maybe. This is a great alternative. This is really a wonderful alternative, I think. But my concern is around 88th Street and, and Coal Creek. I know it was mentioned that we're thinking that, I think it's going to be only 200 and some more traffic occurrences in 2040 on, on Coal Creek. And it seems to me that if you don't have another access, I, I kind of laid out a scenario. If you're going to build Coal Creek through and then you attach it to the town center, then that attaches to McCaslin and that attaches to Highway 36. And for everybody on this side of town, that becomes the way to get to Highway 36. And so I would just, and that's maybe carrying it a little too far, but I don't think so. Everybody wants to take the shortest route that they can take. And maybe they don't want to drive clear up Rock Creek and go around the new roundabout to get on Highway 36. Some, in the wintertime, that might really be interesting, I don't know. Just my opinion. So I would be very much in favor of taking a look at another access, the 88th Street access. Maybe not even taking Coal Creek through. I don't live right on Coal Creek, but it's just, I just see that as being a kind of a major thoroughfare. Couple of years ago, went to some of the meetings where you had some mitigation features proposed, you know, sounds like the bumps and the other things on Waldona didn't slow anything down. I don't know what you'd do on Coal Creek to slow things down. And you've got houses backed on each side of it as opposed to 88th, room to widen it, et cetera. So that would be my concern for our community would be how we could get 88th really tied in, just to abate, abate what I think would be if you put just Coal Creek through, a great deal of, great deal more traffic, I think, than, than what we're looking at or at least what, what I heard in, in my own mind, that's the way I look at it. So that's all I have to say. Great project. Hope we get it done.
Thank you, Dave. Next, right here in the blue. Yeah.
I'm Richard Miller and I live also at 1145 Stonemore Street with my wife, Pat. I appreciate the civil engineering concerns of traffic and, and flow of traffic, but I think there's another big concern in everything in the front range and in Superior in particular, and that's another aspect of civil engineering, the soil mechanics, the drainage, topography of this site. And I think many of these things have been addressed in Superior as it exists, Rock Creek as it exists, but I haven't seen a drawing that shows the topography just of this site. Just the fact that you can have a walkout basement in some of the homes, other homes you won't have that. I'd like to know what the drainage is in the area and see that that has been addressed. Is there a topographic drawing of this site? And I think that's something that is always a concern in this area, has been a concern and needs to be addressed. I also drive along 88th to get in and out of this area and that is one bumpy road. And that, I think, is soils and drainage and water content and moving the water off the site. Those are important aspects of, of building anything in this area. They have been addressed in some cases in other parts of Superior, not so well. I'd like to see proof that that has been addressed for this area.
Thank you. You have the back?
I'm Burton McKenzie at 1514 East Waldona Way. And I would definitely want to, you know, repeat what's already been noted is that I'd, I would not be in favor of this development without addressing existing issues such as obviously Waldona Way. Even the, the town's own traffic patterns as well as speed, actually, the speed has actually gone down a little bit, I think, because of the speed humps. But as we had noted in so many meetings before, that it wasn't even the town's own staff, that was never, the speed humps were never going to be a deterrent for the cut-through traffic, but it was a deterrent, has been positive for the speed. It's gone from like 26% or 26 miles per hour average to 20, I believe, is what I saw. But it's not cut down on cut-through traffic. As soon as, the month after the speed humps were installed, you know, probably because of school or whatever, you know, traffic went up. Maybe time of year, who knows? But I, I too think this is a much needed, I think I love the development. It's a private property. I've been in commercial banking and in commercial real estate for 20 years. I understand that had the economics behind private property and have no qualms about that. Actually, I'm a proponent for it. So, but you have to do something before this gets approved because the existing traffic issues are just unacceptable essentially. So in my view, so I would say either cut off Waldona on either end or somewhere in the middle if you get proposals from an engineer, I'm not sure how that would happen, or open up both Amherst, they can, they can eat as well as Promenade to access this development to 88th. 88th is going to be, you know, is, is the key. Same thing with the Zaharis property, same issues. It's going to, you have to, you have to figure out and plan for transportation before you do big developments like this. Period. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. I'm sorry. Get you next.
Hi, I'm Katie Lester at 1171 Amherst Way. I couldn't agree more with what he just said. I think that we all like the, the development and we all understand the need for it. I think we've got known problems though with traffic right now and routing that traffic through Coal Creek or figuring out some other place to make a problem isn't going to solve anything. You've got problems on Waldona. I don't even live on Waldona. That is a huge problem. I mean, it's, it's, there's so many children playing outside there, somebody's going to get hurt. The same thing on Coal Creek. We don't have direct access. Our homes don't have, you know, I'm sorry, driveways backing to Coal Creek, but you're just going to create more cut-through traffic getting into town center. And I don't think it's that unreasonable to believe that that would create more traffic going to town center, getting on McCaslin and heading off to 36. So you're taking traffic, I guess, away from Rock Creek and McCaslin and then throwing it down Coal Creek, which also has a bunch of families on it with small kids. I have three small children of my own who love playing in the street and I just think you're creating more problems before you're solving the ones that you have. You've got 88th that's a problem. You know, I forgot his name. Traffic engineer explained. We've got one accident there a year. Fix it. Fix, fix 88th before you keep building more and putting more traffic on it. You've got Waldona that's a no, a known problem. Fix it before you're going to root more traffic down that street. I, I think you just have to fix the problems that we have before creating more on top of them. We all love the development. We do not love the traffic that's about to come through our neighborhood that we don't want. And I think a lot of us would be in, well, me personally, I would be in favor of it not connecting at all to Coal Creek. I don't think we want any more traffic down that street. Close off Waldona. Goodness, enough is enough on that poor street. And figure out 88th and then root your traffic around 88th because that's where people in this neighborhood are more than likely going to need to go. No offense to the old folks, but I think they need to go to the doctor, which is, you know, you can get there on 88th. I mean, that's where you, they're probably going to need to go and you can get quickly to other places that way as well. I don't think you need to root them down Coal Creek, have them taking, sorry, what?
I like you.
It's my first meeting ever. But I mean, again, you know, you're, it's just, you, you need to figure out that the problems that you've got now. Because I think another problem you're going to have is if you've got then this development coming down Coal Creek, trying to take a left onto Rock Creek with more traffic, which is already more difficult, heading around a traffic circle and then heading up 88th. None of this makes sense to me. You know, I think you just, again, not to beat a dead horse here, but figure out the problems that you have. 88th is a problem, Waldona's a problem. Fix those and then move on to the development. That's my opinion on that.
Thank you, Katie. Do you want to go? Yeah, yes, in the right?
Marla Press, 1282 South Mesa Court. I've been a Rock Creek resident since 1991 and my house backs up to Coal Creek Drive. So I'm representing everybody on South Mesa Court whose house backs up to, hey, how you doing? To South Mesa Court, to, to Coal Creek Drive. And, and my house is right where the stop sign is, where you would go to get onto Coal Creek from Akron. And especially there when people are stopping, that's when you hear all the traffic louder because they're actually revving up their engine to start again and stop and start. And it's really loud there already and I can't even imagine how it's going to be really crappy to be on my back porch when all that traffic is going through. So I think that sometimes you have to have that go through, but if it went through to downtown, I think it would be way too much traffic for that street to handle. And if we could, like other people say, just have it go around, have several options for people so that they're not all going down Coal Creek is my vote and vote for everybody on South Mesa Court and Akron and Coal Creek Drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Marla. Yeah, back in the corner.
Guy Romer on 1234 South Waldona Lane.
Guy Romer on 1234 South Waldona Lane. First off, I just want to make a comment that, I know this is a normal Tuesday meeting, but having it the night before a holiday, I think there would be more participants here if it was moved, so. Before I get to Waldona, I want to ask, why wasn't it considered to connect Lantern's Lane to Pitkin? You're going to have two cul-de-sacs back-to-back right there, so that would help alleviate some of the traffic going down Coal Creek and then turning right onto Akron to get to, to Rock Creek. So, even if you have to take out a few units, I know there's a grate there, you go up the hill, but I just walked up there this morning, and it seems like that should have been at least looked at. So, I strongly suggest you take a look at that. As for Waldona, I agree, the speed bumps have done nothing to reduce traffic. Speed has gone down a little bit. I would prefer it closed as well, but without another option for this new development to get out to 88, you know, I'm just not in favor of it right now for my two little kids that play out in the cul-de-sac, so please consider another route to get out of this new development. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Good evening, Ken Lish, 1326 South Idalia Court. First and foremost, just like everyone else, I'd like to thank the applicant for their interest in joining this part of our community, and I, like everyone else, do appreciate the need for this product and, and am in favor of it. I, I won't beat a dead horse and belabor the point, but traffic is clearly an issue. I don't think that we can move forward with this unless, barring using any of the other proposals that Alex showed tonight, if there is going to be connection at Waldona, or at Coal Creek, Promenade needs to be constructed at the same time, alleviating at least that amount of traffic going down Waldona initially. However, I think what you've heard tonight shows that we're not ready for this. What the next step really should be is sending this to the Transportation and Safety Committee. Everything you're hearing tonight says this is a transportation issue, not necessarily a development issue. Having the Transportation and Safety Committee step in and have a public meeting where we probably get two or three times the amount of people that are here tonight and actually hear everyone's voices and proposals on what should work, seeing a bunch of options, will really push the direction of this and the way it should go, rather than trying to make a decision before we really know what should happen. Beyond that, I'd like to step back to the parks and playgrounds discussion that we had earlier. I understand that this is a area that's supposed to be 55 and up, that there's not really a need for parks and necessary playground in this subdivision for that clientele. However, this is not a development being built on an island. We're joining a subdivision that's already created, a subdivision that 100% north of Rock Creek Parkway does not have a playground. So, coming in and actually being complimentary of the neighborhood and adding value to the area, I think, needs to be considered and important, and I think taking some space, whether that means dropping a unit or two to actually add a park and playground, is important for the area as a whole. It should be considered. My final personal comment is that I've, I've got a very, I've got a more technical question. I'm trying to figure out why the developer is seeking to rezone the property to R1B instead of R1A. R1A allows for four dwelling units per acre, and R1B allows for eight dwelling units per acre. The proposed development is 2.9 dwelling units per acre, therefore fitting within the R1A, so just trying to figure out where that discrepancy is and why we're not just going to R1A. Beyond that, both Prostag and OSAC had this application presented to them at the last meetings. I can't speak for Prostag directly, but I do know that they also recommended some type of totlot-type park be added, and then for OSAC specifically, if we can go back directly to the development. So, on the western edge, where there's a space between Pitkin, one of the concerns that OSAC has had in the past is ensuring that there's wildlife corridors. To the north here, you have the drainage ditch area that's going to continue being an open area, and to the right of that is the Track H open space that's been created. One of OSAC's points of concern was ensuring that there's still wildlife corridors that somehow have a way to get towards the Zaharis property and then further down to the Hodgson-Harris reservoir, creating some type of actual connectivity there. The best OSAC could come, come to a conclusion on was trying to ensure that on the west side of this development, there remain as much of an open space area as possible. If extended, that'd be great, but ensuring there's actually some type of wildlife corridor. Beyond that, OSAC talked about ensuring diversity of trail mixes throughout the area, throughout Rock, Rock Creek. So we discussed possibly ensuring that the trail that's here on the south side, that borders the current area and is currently social trail, could be considered to remain as a dirt or crusher pine trail. And then, finally, in what was presented to us at least, there was a future trail that went up on the east and north side, and it just was noted as possible future trail. We wanted to ensure that if there was going to be a trail up there, that it got built with the rest of the development. We realized it would be kind of a trail to nowhere, like what Track H is right now, but what we've seen in the past is if trails don't get built during construction, they get lost along the way and they don't get built, so to ensure connectivity and continuity to our trail system, we'd insist upon ensuring that all future trails actually become current trails. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken. Any other public comment?
Yes. Hello, my name is Dalton Valet. I live at 912 East Carville Place, and I want to reiterate a lot of the comments that a lot of people have said. I really think the major issues that are here right now are dealing with traffic. I understand there's a lot of people who really want to have a lot of homes that are catering towards individuals that are hoping to downsize, because Rock Creek has plenty of very large homes right now, and I've spoken with a number of people who do want to see homes that are a little bit smaller, and I think the proposal right now is very good. I like the way that it's designed. I really appreciate the single-level story space as well, but we really need to address a lot of the concerns regarding traffic. And I want to mention something that hasn't really been brought up before. Let's say this is put in place, and let's say Coal Creek is connected to the town center, and then the Zaharis property is developed. I can easily see a lot of residents in the Zaharis property, which currently, to the best of my knowledge, has around 180 units potentially going in there, connecting up through Waldona into Coal Creek, then over to town center, onto McCaslin, and then onto 36. So I could easily see this becoming an even bigger thoroughway than it already is. Now, I personally do not live on Waldona, but I've absolutely seen a lot of the traffic that has gone through there, so I absolutely think that we need to address the traffic beforehand before going forward with this development. And again, I'm very much in favor of what is being proposed. I think the houses are very beautiful and cater to a lot of needs, but we really need to look at how the congestion issues are going to impact the quality of life of the people, not only potentially living here, but the people that are already currently living in Superior. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, I'm Doug Waffle, 1191 Amherst Way. Just wanted to reiterate a lot of what's already been said tonight related to traffic. One of the things that, I don't know if the traffic estimates really factored into, is if Coal Creek Drive gets extended all the way into the downtown, all those residents there, have those numbers been factored into the traffic count coming back south on Coal Creek Drive? So, again, the one thing I wasn't quite sure of, too, also, is on this Lantern Lane on the east end connecting the, there's a cul-de-sac at the end of it. I don't quite understand why that can't connect to what is now proposed as just an emergency road out to 88. I imagine the residents of this new property would appreciate that access as well. So, again, reiterating the, all the traffic concerns that have been brought up tonight, just wanted to voice my opinion as well, and make sure that these people have more than one exit out of there. I think they'll appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more public comment? Oh, let's see, so.
Not quite ready to close the public hearings. I think we have questions for staff and potentially the applicant. Is that?
I was going to ask staff, I think, some follow-up questions based on some of the questions we heard from the public comment. Alex, maybe you could talk about trail connections in the Promenade Drive road section. If, can it really accommodate, you know, a through trail? What are future plans for trails along there?
I'm bringing it up for you, Alex. You just hang tight.
Okay, from a trail perspective, one of those things that the staff has been planning for a number of years is to extend the US-36 bikeway on the Superior side from the, the bridge where it crosses over to Vista Hospital Campus. Well, that, to extend that along the US-36, under 88th Street Bridge, potentially can, connect with the Hodgson-Harris native area and into the Flatiron Crossing area. So that's, that's one, you know, regional trail connection we'd like to make at, at some point. How that connects to 88, we could have a loop when it goes under and comes back up to provide a connection up to, to Monarch. The connection directly on, on this side of 88, on the west side of 88, bringing that up is a little more problematic just because of the, the constraints we have with the being, Promenade being adjacent to the embankment at, the 88th Street overpass of 36, so.
Do you want a pointer? I think there's one on there.
Okay. So, so down here, we're kind of limited in what we can provide in terms of, of trails here, so this could be, we'll have a, an attached walk along, along the west side. We can't really get a trail on the, on the east side because of the, the embankment, so we'll have a, a trail attached walk that comes along here and connects up. And then hopefully we'll have this trail connection along 36, under 88, potentially a loop, you know, going to Monarch. So that's kind of the, the regional trail connection that we're, we're talking about.
Constructing Promenade Drive doesn't preclude that regional trail connection?
No, no.
Okay, there's room for both?
Yes.
And then, could you also talk about, when I look at, so this is just my perception of traffic connecting from this part of Rock Creek, using Coal Creek Drive to get to potentially the town center, potentially McCaslin, potentially Marketplace, and onto 36. I lived on Amherst for six years, and I now live on Riverbend just south of there, so I feel like I really know these traffic patterns and can understand what, what I'm hearing tonight, and I appreciate you all for coming and sharing that. My thoughts, though, when I look at these streets and the way they're designed, that getting from, yeah, I mean, I think getting from this part of town into the heart of the town center makes a lot of sense using a new connection, but there's going to be, as I see it, there's a lot of stops, there's a lot of turns. None of these streets are through streets. None of these streets are designed, I mean, you have to go around Village Green, you got to stop, and then you've got to go through the roundabouts on Main, and if any of you have traveled on Main Street, you know, that's not a high-speed roadway. So my concern related to having Coal Creek Drive now become kind of the main way to get from this part of town over to the Marketplace, I don't see a lot of folks doing that. I mean, if I were going to get from my house now over to Target, I still probably would take Rock Creek Drive and McCaslin, rather than having to make 14 turns and stops along the way. What do your traffic projections show, though, for inducing maybe additional traffic on Coal Creek Drive if these connections are made with the design of town center?
Sure. And, and I think, you know, a lot of the, the comments I heard is that we should address these things. We've been talking about these connections. We've been doing projections for a number of years. You're exactly right, in terms of the Coal Creek connection, that was always envisioned as, as connecting neighborhoods. It was never envisioned to carry regional traffic through this area. You would never go, you would never come outside of this area to try to get to US-36 and get to McCaslin with, with this connection. This is really for, to connect the, the Rock Creek Ranch neighborhood with the town center neighborhood. You're going to have commercial development, you have activity centers, and we want this neighborhood to be able to get there, and, and Coal Creek Drive and, and the streets within the town center are all, they're not like, you know, Coal Creek is designed right now. It's not designed as a collective. It's designed as local roads. We have parallel parking on some of the streets. We have a lot of stop signs. We have neck downs to slow the traffic down, to keep it at 25, 30 miles an hour, you know, very, very slow speeds. We don't want people going 40, 45 miles an hour, and that's what you would have to do to, to track regional traffic to come through this area. So that's, that's our, our vision for the connection of Coal Creek Drive into, into the town center, a neighborhood connection. The, the connections, we're trying to foster a number of connections. As Dulce, my good friend Dulce said, it's better than more connections because it disperses the traffic. That's why we have both Promenade and Coal Creek Drive, that will disperse the traffic. Remember, on Coal Creek Drive, there's a lot of traffic from the Stone, Stoneham Development that goes south, that, that now could go north to, to Promenade to get out to 88, could go north into the town center. We, we expect, we did project some traffic from the town center coming through this area, and we had a number, I don't know, if you remember the, the traffic, it was, you know, several hundred trips. It wasn't thousands of trips. There was about 3,000 vehicles, almost 4,000 on Promenade from the town center. We felt that Promenade would pick up the lion's share of traffic from the town center, because you have kids there that would want to go to Monarch or, or to the hospital or to other, other areas in Lewisville. So, that's the outlet for the town center to 88th Street. The town board has talked about the campus drive connection as also being an outlet for the town center traffic to get to Lewisville. That's why we did the campus drive study. The, the bridge and related facilities would cost about $14 million up in, in that area. It's a big number to do that. We have not gotten support for, from Lewisville at this point to, to proceed with that. Maybe that's a, a long-term connection, but it's certainly not in the, in the short-term horizon. So, you know, campus drive is another option, and that could be the long term. So, it's not that we haven't talked about this. We've been studying this thing for, for three or four years, going back to the town center. I think there was talk about having the Traffic and Safety Committee meet on this. They did. Two years ago, we took options like this to them. We had some preliminary traffic studies. They gave us some direction, and, again, they don't take, take votes, they didn't take official action, but we, we think that this is more or less alongs the, along the lines of the comments that we heard from the Traffic and Safety Committee. And they, they can't meet at this point, because this is an application that's been submitted, it's in the process. They really can't meet. The three, Traffic and Safety Committee is composed of three town board members, so they can't really meet at this point and, and give us direction. They're going to have to do it at a town board meeting.
I have a few more questions while you're up here. If it's determined that the town, that kind of the third, third, third split that Stephen had mentioned regarding paying for Promenade, what would the approximate cost for a budget for the town just to construct Promenade Drive? Any ideas on that?
And extend Coal Creek.
And extend Coal Creek, sorry.
You're putting me out of the spot.
Just, I'm just thinking ballpark.
Jim might have.
And I think my, part of this is, just to put it in perspective of, you know, folks have talked about widening 88 or, you know, maybe building other connections, and if we're talking about options, this is probably one of the least expensive.
I think the town, from the town staff's standpoint, as that southern area of the town center gets developed, we want some commitment from their developer, and then the town may have to partner in terms of making that connection happen.
And then, do you feel, I have concerns, I think, related to safety of... And then, do you feel, I have concerns, I think, related to safety of... I guess my, my concern comes in with kids in the downtown Superior. All of them are slated to go to the Monarch Schools, and if we, we construct Promenade Drive and we put a trail immediately next to it in this location, right next to 36, what, what's the distance separation, or what other means could we do, I think, to provide safety for, I think this particular trail could get utilized in a different fashion than maybe the rest, the rest of the trail does, as kiddos are trying to get over to Monarch.
Okay. In terms of fencing from 36 right away?
Fencing or a berm, I don't know how much room you have in there. Just kinda wanna throw that out there, and maybe what your thoughts are.
Yeah, that's a good concern. We haven't, you know, taken it that far. We'd, we'd have to monitor the, the usage on, on 36, see if that's be, become a problem. Right now, they just have the three strand, you know, wood, wooden posts and metal wires and stuff, but we, we can take a look at that.
When you were talking, were you asking about downtown, the population of downtown getting to Monarch High School?
Monarch High School, Monarch K.A., I mean, yeah, they, all those kids go to.
Right, so right now, we have a pedestrian bridge that goes over.
Right. No, that's a good point, so they could go up and over that way. Yeah, good point.
Along Campus Drive.
Yeah.
Did I pick up most of the comments from the public?
I think we've gotten most of the comments.
The only thing you might be able to address is the connection, or whether or not it's possible for, I don't, my understanding is this is not possible for Lantern's Lane to connect to Promenade, either as a right-in, right-out, or, or anything, should Promenade get extended because it would create the same cut-through traffic problem that we have.
Right, I think that was our, our concern. It didn't make sense to, to do that because we didn't want another Wildona situation where they're cutting, cutting through.
So, one of the questions was why, I think it was from the last public comment that we had, was why this doesn't connect to, to Promenade and provide a different access point out to 88th Street. And it's partly because if, if this connects, I don't know where my pointer went, to the town center, then this would be the, the valve out, and we'd have backout driveways on a, on a busy street getting out to 88th Street, so.
What do you do, both? Promenade and that?
We can't, we can't take...
If we did, if we did Promenade and that connection, then, then it might be less of an issue, correct? You might have people coming this way to get out from, you know, further, further west to get out to 88th Street as well, so.
Open them all.
I understand, I, that's a...
I need to ask the public to refrain from speaking from the audience. We can't, we can't capture it, we don't know what's being said, and conversations start to happen that don't make sense when people go back and look at it, so. I, I'm happy to, if somebody wants to come up and respond for a minute, and it's quick, just raise your hand, I'll allow that, but let's try to refrain from the caller now, please.
Couple of other questions I heard, why didn't we connect this? The two cul, is that Pitkin?
Yep.
Yeah, Pitkin.
I think that was one, one question we had, and I think there's a real great issue between these two cul-de-sacs, one is much higher than the other, and it was really difficult to make that connection. We even wanted a trail connection, we had difficulty doing, doing that. We also talked about all the other civil engineering issues, and I can assure you that we have soils reports, geotech reports, we've had our outside consultants review all those and make sure that this is gonna be built, and it's gonna last, and built properly, so we know all the problems that we've had in the rest of the Rock Creek Grants, and all our new developments, we try to solve those issues before they arise.
Yes, if you're gonna come up for just a moment? Sure.
As I kinda mentioned before...
Say your name and address your...
Oh, Dulcey Brown, again, 1404 East Wildona Way. So, as I mentioned before, love the property up there, love it being developed, but either close off Wildona because everybody said it's a problem. Alex has said, it's a problem, it's a known problem. We don't wanna create another problem, we'll take care of the first problem. Or, open them all up, do the promenade, open it up, where's the thing? I don't know which way it goes.
I'll point for you.
Oh, that was a good one. No, that's, is that yours?
That's mine, yeah.
I'm saying, wow, I'm getting it, and that's, I'm not doing it.
Where you wanna point to?
So, open up the promenade, open up the cul-de-sac, open up Amherst, open, keep Wildona open, and then open up the one, like I said, south of us. It'll alleviate everybody's problems, or, or close it off. And as far as Alex's idea about the, whatever it is, right-hand turn only on Wildona, what does that do? I, I don't, you know, maybe it'll reduce it a little bit. I just have never liked that idea, especially with Zaharius maybe coming in, who knows what's gonna happen with that? Make a right-hand turn, go down around to the roundabout, come back up again, it's like, really? That's just creating more problems. So, take care of it before these people build this property up there, which everybody wants you guys to build it, but we've got traffic problems. So, don't do anything until you take care of the traffic problems as it stands now.
Thank you. Well, and I think our issue, as Alex alluded to, is that we, we do have an applicant requesting a development that we're having to address tonight, so we're faced with that decision this evening, so. Is there any more comments or questions for, if I close the public hearing, our discussion with staff and developer are, are over.
I've got a question, I guess it is for Alex. What, what is the, you know, this resident's asking to close off Wildona or open them all up? Why, why can't we just close off Wildona? It's been such an issue for everyone. We've put speed bumps out, it doesn't seem to be working. And I think, looking at the map, if we close off Wildona, that makes that whole section of the neighborhood a giant cul-de-sac, all the streets, and there's only one way out.
Yes, the, the board went through a, a whole public outreach process, and they heard a lot of comments. They heard from Wildona residents, they also heard from people outside the area, they heard about emergency services, getting to the hospital and, and things of that nature. So, they took all that into consideration, and then, and the speed humps were the, the result of that. There aren't a whole lot of alternatives. I think maybe when this goes, that goes through and all these connections are made, that could be another consideration, but they certainly heard all, all these comments, and they, they, that's the action they took.
Okay, thank you.
One other item that wasn't addressed about 88th Street, yes, it is falling apart, we realize that, and the, we have submitted a budget request for next year to get, get started on improvements there, whether the Zaharius property is, is approved or not. So, we, we wanna get, we've been waiting for that, see what action, but we wanna move forward with, with some improvement there in the near future.
And there's been quite a bit of discussion around Zaharius developing, and then, I mean, that would really open up opportunity for improvement on 88th as well. Is that true, or is that gonna happen regardless?
It's gonna happen regardless, so I think we'll, we'll proceed, you know, getting it approved, and then if they develop, still have to pay us back for their, the share that we're billing on their side.
Okay.
Alex, one more question before you leave, I'm sorry. We get to, and maybe this isn't for you, maybe it's for Stephen or even Mr. Cooper, but i- is there a way to get a little bit more certainty around being able to connect Coal Creek to Promenade? In both the presentation and in the presentation by the builder, there seemed to be an issue with some stretch of property or land there that is not owned by them or owned by us, and we will have to work with someone else, a third party, to get permission to do that, to connect that, or is that, is that going to be an issue at all?
So, the, the question, and it was mentioned in staff's memo, so I'll, I'll answer it, but there is a 50-foot strip here that's owned by the South Boulder and Coal Creek Irrigation Company, so we've had the applicant work with them to ensure that they can actually have access across that 50-foot area of land, it's called Track D, that's there for irrigation. So, there's some pipes running through there, there was some engineering that we had to sort out, and, and then also to work with them to ensure that they would give us an easement, or whatever we need to get across there, and they have a letter from them that clarifies that they're, that they've shown that it can be built, and that the irrigation company is supportive of that, should that be the direction we go, so.
Thank you, Alex.
One more, one more comment?
Dave Glekom again, 1199 Snyder Way. Couple of years ago, in some of these discussions, and it had to do with this Zaharius property, I think it was with the traffic group, we had representation from the group on the east side of 88th Street, near the roundabout. They were concerned about getting kids to Monarch on 88th, and the backup getting into Monarch in the morning and in the afternoon, and there was a lot of talk about, well, you know, how many more lanes do we need to add, and what could that do, and what are, whatnot. But I can just envision another thing. At that same meeting, one of the final comments is, if you build it, they will come, and I'm thinking about Coal Creek Drive, so if 88th gets backed up, taking kids to school and other people are trying to get somewhere, I, I still kinda believe that if you build it, they will come. If you take, Coal Creek can put it all the way through, where you can get to 36 or to other avenues of getting out, I just think that's just gonna turn into just a bigger problem than what we're imagining now. That's all.
Thank you. Anything else come up for?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I do have a question, or a couple of questions for Mr. Cooper, please. What kind of timeframe are you looking at if this is approved for groundbreaking? And I didn't ask that earlier, and I should have.
Sure, good question. We will, we would probably be spending, you know, end of the summer, into the fall, getting our final approvals and closing on the property, so we would probably commence land development in the fall, which would likely continue through the winter, so probably be opening in the spring. So, vertical construction could possibly start as early as the end of the year and into the springtime of next year.
So, there is some, some urgency here to try and move this forward so that you can stay on schedule with your development?
Yeah, we are under contract to purchase, which, there is a timeline associated with that, so yes.
And, and one other thing while I have you here, a question came up about the zoning, and I, I thought that was a good question, and I looked at it earlier, and you are asking for R1B, or is that something that the town suggested to, or staff suggested to develop that, R1B as opposed to R1A, since you are proposing such a low number of units per acre?
Right. I'll let Stephen cover that.
Okay. So, it's consistent with the existing zoning everywhere around it, even though it's, it's single-family, and the R1A, if I'm recalling correctly, it, it certainly does have less density. I mean, it's, so this falls within the density requirements of R1A, but R1A was intended to be more just single-family development, and rather than have them come forward and ask for an exception for a duplex in a single, like a traditional single-family area, they would rather come forward and ask for less zoning within an area that allows for greater zoning and not ask for as many exceptions, and that's been the strategy of most developers that don't wanna ask for exceptions, where they could ask for, voluntarily give you constraints, like they, so the, through this PUD requirement, or this PUD update, they're not gonna have, so this will never be able to redevelop at a, at a, you know, units an acre. They're, they're proposing their PUD to be three units an acre, and that will hold for the foreseeable future. So, staff was, was comfortable with that approach and felt that it also matched the existing zoning, which everywhere else in there, even though that it's a single-family residential, is R1B, so.
Thank you for that clarification. So, this application is not proposing any provisions for ADUs or anything like that?
No, sir. If I might just conclude with, you know, we, I anticipated this hearing and the town board hearing would revolve more around transportation issues around our project, but also part of our project, our, if, if we didn't continue Coal Creek, all of our traffic would be going out through Rock Creek, obviously, is, is its only way out. So, I anticipate this is the conversation we have, but working with staff, we deliberately set this plan up to give the town just about every option to solve this problem, so I feel that we're open, as the builder, to, that anything that we presented, any of those connections that have been debated, we're in support of. We don't need them, we just need one or two ways out. If we had access out to 88th, I think that would benefit us, benefit our buyers, I don't think we need it either. We could be at the end of a long cul-de-sac, and that would perfectly, obviously, suit our buyers as well. We could have connection into downtown Superior, that would probably suit some buyers, but not others. So, really, there's, from our standpoint, we're not standing in the way of anything, and we feel that we've presented, planning commission to the town board with every option to make their decision tonight, so appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
And I do have one quick question pertaining to the actual building and the setbacks and the height of the building. Can you go back to, I think it's one of the first pages, right? Did I see, like, the maximum height would be 35 feet?
They were showing 35 feet? They didn't change that or constrain that? So, that was one of the comments staff had to them to just, you know, instead of asking for 35 feet when they only need 32, I think 32 and a half feet was like the, the worst-case scenario, and there's only one unit that's that tall, and it's only when you have the garden level, so it's only that one perspective from the south, but most of their heights are 28 to 30 feet tall, so that's something we can, they haven't been able to respond to that comment yet. They just got my staff memo when you guys did. So, we haven't had that discussion, but I typically, you know, they've been very amenable to all the comments that we've provided.
And then one, and then one other, and I don't remember...
Oh, and the setbacks?
No, setbacks, I'm fine. One other thing I noticed in my set of drawings that I received, and I had it in my notebook that I left at work, is that somewhere, I think one of the pages, it showed like on the Zaharius property across the street, it's, I think it was listed as Lewisville?
I believe that's correct. Yeah, we weren't totally aware of that either, but I think the C.D.A. property that's adjacent to the Zaharius is still technically in the city of Lewisville, but we'll look at the plot to make sure that that's accurate, but that's a good catch.
Related to the building height, if, if we could just have two to three feet tolerance of what we're showing on our plans, because we haven't done construction drawings and plot plans, we need some tolerance that would give us a few feet, two or three feet, you know, from what we're actually showing, so.
Which would leave it at 35, so, but chances are, they come in mostly underneath that. And it's the same thing with their setback, so that's one of the, you know, they're asking for 15 feet to accommodate their worst-case scenario, that's only like three or four units that even come close to approaching that rear setback, and then their side yard setbacks at five feet are typically adjacent to, so they only occur in four locations, it's here, here, and it's at the end of their developments, here and here, and they have outlots that are immediately adjacent to them, and these are, well, these aren't outlots, these are tracks, so this is privately held tracks. So, the reason that we kinda consider this a little bit differently is that it's basically kinda based on their, their model of development, where they don't have fences around their, their, their properties, and that it's all maintained by the HOA, so it's all landscaped kinda similarly and to be complimentary, and you, you don't see a distinct property line here, so it's not technically as critical. There are instances where, I think there's one instance on the south side where they're gonna have a 16-foot setback to what would be a public trail, but we've required that public trail to be dedicated at a 16-foot wide easement, so that we have an eight-foot trail, and then five feet of consistent landscaping that the town will maintain on either side of that street, so the setback to the trail is actually five feet greater, closer to 20, 21 feet, so. Those are the reasons that we don't have concerns with the, the setback exceptions that they're, they're proposing. And then the other thing, finally, that, that we mentioned, I think in the staff memo, is the, the extension of the fence within Rock Creek Ranch. They don't, they prefer not to have that, that, that fence along the northern boundary that separates everyone else in Rock Creek from the town center, be six feet tall, so they proposed a split-level fence here that would, because of the grades, I think that that would actually provide a barrier and not have any view for their residents in this location, so that's one of the other exceptions that are being posited through this proposal.
And then, my last comment, the, is pertaining to the wildlife corridor. What's the distance between the end of the cul-de-sac and to the, to the west? To the Pitkin space, I mean, is it...
I don't know offhand, it's not...
But then again, these, I mean, there are no fences for any of the residences, so it...
There's no fences on the residence, but that would be, you know, a potential concern that, you know, Ken could probably speak to you better than I could in terms of what the, the split-rail fence would even be a concern for them for the wildlife corridor actually going through here. There's enough space here for this, we, we were able... There's enough space here for this, we, we were able to work with them to get this sidewalk connection down from this so that folks can have a little bit more connectivity to the regional trail if they, they don't have to go east to go west if they wanted to catch the trail here in this location. But I'm saying these lots are all like forty-five feet wide, so you, you have, you know, forty-five to sixty feet through this area, minimum?
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
We've got to give a place for those coyotes because they go back there all the time.
Actually, actually, after our last meeting the other night, I drove down and I was in front of the new townhomes that were being built, and I turned around and there was a deer standing right there. And I was like, that is, yeah. So I understand now all of a sudden the wildlife corridor makes a lot more sense tonight, so. Okay. Thanks. I'm done.
Anything else? Are we ready for discussion? All right. All good? Last call. All right. Close of public hearing. At this point in time, it's discussion amongst the Planning Commission. We have clarification things with staff, that discussion's reasonable, but having conversations with the applicant and the public at this point is closed, and who wants to start? I'll be happy to, I didn't ask too many questions, but, I mean, I think, I think we know generally what our, what the concerns are. I mean, I, I get the sense that everybody's, likes the development, likes the layout, but we're just facing issues that we've been talking about for quite a few years. We have a comprehensive plan that addresses this. We have a road that is intended to go through there for, for a very long time. We have Well-Dona Way, which, I mean, I've, I've had, I have friends who've moved from there, very good friends who we spend a lot of time with, so I've, I've heard lots and lots about Well-Dona Way. I think we all know the issues there, and I've attended a number of meetings. Struggle with whether we can, can address Well-Dona Way specifically in this application. That's, you know, there's no, nothing we can do in this application to address that other than to consider whether the, the changes we propose might reduce or impact the way Well-Dona Way is, is currently used. And I have just blown away by everybody that attended today. That's, I just want to, do want to thank everybody for, for coming down. I think we knew what was going to be said, and I think we're right there with you. This, this has to be talked about and thought about, but we do have to address this applic, this application tonight and make a recommendation to the Town Board, so. My, my initial reaction is get, get connectivity to Eighty-Eighth, you know, get Coal Creek extended, let it, let it continue down. We don't have to take it down to town center today, you know, with this application, but extending it to Promenade and completing Promenade would, you know, I just sit here and look at this map and, yeah, Well-Dona Way is it. You know, that's, that's your connection to Eighty-Eighth if you're back up in that area. So it, it makes sense, it's, it's a logical traverse for people. I live in a situation like this where people want to use Coal Creek Drive and have had to deal with it as well, and you just have to keep working to figure out better ways to improve the traffic flow. And I, I think adding Promenade to Eighty-Eighth and connecting Coal Creek provides another corridor. And as Alex indicated, you know, gives us the opportunity to readdress the other streets down the road, just, we can see what happens and, you know, figure out what the, what changes need to be, be made, or if there's anything we can do to make it better, or if just putting Promenade in would take care of it. I think the improvements to Eighty-Eighth Street will just make everything a little bit better as well. Those are my initial thoughts.
I agree. I'm not supportive, you know, philosophically, I think, of closing streets. I think it's really critical. We have problems in this part of town because we don't have options for travel, other than Well-Dona Way. And I think it's unfortunate that tonight we don't have full control over the connection to Promenade, because I wouldn't support this application if that weren't at the table as designed. I think the connection to Promenade is, is absolutely critical, I think, for the long-term transportation issues in this whole part of town. So everybody that's accessed off Coal Creek Drive, leaving only Well-Dona and then Coal Creek and Rock Creek Parkway is the only two options. I don't support, you know, any other development without exist, you know, without improving access options for folks up here. I'm struggling with how to require Promenade Drive being approved when we don't have full control over the property that it would be constructed on and what mechanism we could include to ensure that that doesn't get dropped off in the future? And then we are just only making the situation up in this part of town related to traffic worse by not providing those options. I would love to see it happen now. I don't know that we have that option. Other than that, I support the application. I don't have a problem with the twelve-foot front setback. I think when you look at the seven-foot tree lawn and the five-foot sidewalk, you know, that front setback's fine. I love that we're formalizing that social trail. I mean, I always read the, you're now on private property when I walk on that trail back there, you know, it's, you know, it's crusher fines, it's not well-maintained. I know the town doesn't, you know, own and maintain that property, so I really am pleased that we're formalizing that, that we're going to improve that drainage way. I think it's great. It's, you know, that, that whole thing is going to be, it is already an amenity to that part of town, and I think improving it only just makes it, makes it better. I like the narrower section of Coal Creek Drive. I like that we're transitioning that into the town center in a more local street fashion. I think I'm just really struggling with how to require Promenade or even get it at the same time as this application.
Can I clarify one thing? So we've, we've worked with the developer to ensure that they're dedicating both outlots A and D, which is where Promenade would be to the town?
Right.
So we would, I mean, the town will have control over that? If we want to change, and if, you know, Planning Commission, the board is ready for that to be right away, we would just need to update the plot in order to make that right away. What we don't know yet, and maybe that's what you're getting at, is, you know, what connects up here within the, the town center?
Yes.
And what's actually designed up here? And that slide came up earlier, I think it was from, from Boulder Creek Builders that had, or Boulder Creek Neighborhoods that had a previous designer, but this isn't a platid area yet, so we don't know where those, those roads are. But we do have, as I mentioned, I think at the beginning of the meeting, we do have the applicant who is going to present a concept plan for this area, and they've worked on roadway design. And, and we'll see at, at the, at the board meeting on the twenty-third what that looks like and, you know, whether or not there's a preference. There's also a pond in this area that makes this roadway connection a little more tricky, and it may make both connections even trickier. So that's something that we'll have to consider when we get to that. So it is, you guys aren't in the, in a more difficult position without knowing that additional knowledge, but you'll be at that, that work session dinner, and that can be discussed through the Toll Brothers, and you can kind of relate your thoughts on the whole connectivity issue before they're able to, to meet that night to discuss this application, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I think that's exactly why I'm concerned, because if that connection doesn't happen, for whatever reason, it's, you know, town doesn't own the land, we're not the applicants. The board may feel entirely differently than we do, related to options and connectivity. And I don't know that I would support this application without knowing that Promenade, you know, given the configuration of what they've designed here, with lanterns not connecting through and that being a local street section, and then not, you know, creating another Well-Dona situation, if Promenade can't go through and then we decide to open up lanterns, we've got the exact same situation on this street that we don't want to perpetuate, nor do probably your residents want this to become, you know, a, a cut through if, you know, if ever, if Promenade's not constructed and now you have, you know, fifteen hundred cars a day going down Lantern's, Lantern's Lane, I just don't know that that's a situation that we want to create. So I'm fully supportive of this as shown. We just don't have the ability tonight to see the whole thing through. So that's, I'm just struggling with it, I'm not sure how to, how to, I'm open to your all, all of your thoughts.
So Stephen, who owns that property? As you said, it was Toll Brothers? Or is it RC Superior?
It's RC Superior. Toll Brothers will be the applicant for, you know, a concept plan in order to, to know whether or not, you know, they can go, they want to go forward with the proposal for purchase and development or whatever. So they're, they'll present their plan and get feedback from the board at a concept plan level.
So has RC Superior seen this?
Yes.
Yeah?
They don't.
The idea of Promenade connecting with Coal Creek and going into the town center?
They have a general idea of this application, but they don't get referrals for project areas that are outside of their, their development area, so. You know, the, the engineer that's civil resources is working on both sides of this application, so we do have that, you know, working for us in terms of assurances that, you know, there's feasibility there. But until we know what, I haven't seen, Toll Brothers hasn't submitted a concept plan yet, they just reserved the date, so I haven't seen the plan north of here yet.
So I appreciate Commissioner Ritchie's comments and, and very supportive of them. She's very, you're very insightful.
Thanks.
I really like this project, but there are some outstanding questions I have concerns about that are outside this application that we just don't know about tonight. Along the lines of our resident from Well-Dona talking about opening up the streets or closing the streets, Alex gave me the response that it's, it's an emergency access issue. And so then let's open them up. I think this is leaning toward, this is directing us toward opening it up. Closing it up doesn't seem to be the, the solution.
No. More options are better. I think more options, more options disperse traffic.
So with that, I'm, I'm in support of the, the application as it seemed, as it's presented to us.
I'm also in support of the application, I think, I mean, we're, we just keep hashing over the same, same thing, right? But it, it comes down to a transportation issue that needs to go beyond what our scope is. I would love to, you know, actually, I would, I would don't want to get to where we use an application as a pawn for something, right? And that's not what we do. Right? So, I mean, I'm, I'm in full support of this application and, and just make it a strong point to the board that transportation has to be a key part of, of, of the near future versus pushing anything out.
Yeah, it needs to be a part of the focus of the whole project. I mean, every, every person has mentioned traffic and transportation, except maybe one.
So just a couple of things for myself. Excuse me. In regards to our item number five A, I am completely in support of rezoning that area. I think that it's a much better alternative than what could be there. And really do kind of like the product that's being presented. So I, I'm in favor of that. I, I do have concerns about traffic, as everyone has mentioned, but a couple of things that come to mind for me is that I don't think that Coal Creek, I think that's what it is, was ever designed to be a cul-de-sac or closed off there. I think that the intent from the beginning was to have that road go through. And so, you know, that's, that's tough, because there are people that are, have lived there for a long time, and they like having that road in there, you know? It affords them a lot of privacy and, you know, a place to let their children play. However, I think that time has come to realize what was intended there. And I really think that, that, that for me is a non-issue. I, I agree that more options are better in term of connectivity. One of the thoughts that I have when we were talking about kind of closing places off, closing streets off, is having that development be an island and just kind of not a part of Rock Creek. And I don't like that. I, I think that it's, it's part of our neighborhood and that it should be considered part of our neighborhood and connect it to the community at large. So that's the other, the thought I had about that. Then, you know, there, there are those questions. Will Promenade be built? Well, the developer has committed to dedicating that land for that road. So I think it would be up to our town to make sure that eventually that street connects to the downtown center. And I think it was brought up earlier that we should kind of point that out to the board so that they understand the importance of the future development of that road. So that's, that's really all that I have. And the, the second part of the development, I completely agree. I really like what they're doing. I really think that our town needs this type of housing. The only unfortunate thing is that I don't foresee it being affordable. And, you know, that's, you know, that's one of the things I think that we, as we go along, we're going to need to address at some point. You know, we're talking about housing for people fifty-five and over, and most of those people, and the majority of those people are on fixed incomes. And, you know, when you're talking half a million plus, it becomes difficult for those individuals to look at those places, so. That's all I have.
Anything else?
I agree with a lot that's been said. I do like the, the way the houses are without the storage units. I don't like the storage units at all. My one comment is if this had have developed, when Rock Creek was developed, I think Coal Creek would already been through. That was the plan way back when, and it was going to connect to Coal Creek here in original town, and that was the plan. So I think that it, that should connect. But other than that, I, I agree with everything everybody else has said.
And I, I'm struggling as well, because I feel like there's just a planning component here that needs to be addressed. If, if Promenade doesn't happen, I'd be just beside myself to have approved this development. I just think it's not in the best interest of the town based on the issues we have in that area today, and that we haven't been able to, to correct them or figure out a way to satisfy them. And so, I mean, that, that's my struggle. And if I had some confidence that Promenade was going to happen, I, there, I, no question, I'd like the development. I like the layout. I think Coal, I do think Coal Creek Drive needs to go through, and I, I know there's, you know, varying opinions on that, but I believe that dispersing traffic is better than, than closing things off and, and works better for everybody in general, but I would love to hear just, I, at least having some.
I mean, I guess at a minimum, you know, requiring that it's right of way, you know, recommending that this be approved as right of way, and that, you know, I don't know where the Planning Commission gets to weigh in on development agreements, but that the development agreement, that, you know, this developer agrees to participate in the cost of the, of this. I mean, really, in all fairness, that's probably all we can do tonight. You know, I think, given the application that's before us, this particular application accommodates a future connection. And, you know, that's, I think that's probably as good as we can get for tonight, and just keep it on us to make sure that the rest of the connections happen in the future. I don't know if there's anything more that we can do. That's, you know, I'm just thinking out a little bit, but.
Well, I mean, our options are to approve or deny, or ask the applicant to come back, right? I mean, those are, those are our options, it's just a matter of, you know, I mean, we, we have the best interest of the town as one of our options in the Land Use Code on any of these presentations, so we, we have the ability to.
Yeah.
To do what we think we need to do, and I think we're just, you know, we're all sort of struggling with. To do what we think we need to do. And I think we're just, you know, we're all sort of struggling with getting assurance that that, that connection to Promenade, Promenade is going to happen.
You know, I think in regards to what we are actually charged with doing, we have to look at this application as a whole. And we have to ask ourselves, does it meet the criteria that's set forth in our code and our comprehensive plan? We also have to look at whether or not it's consistent with those codes and if this application is complete. And looking over everything and from what I've seen and the questions that have been asked, for me, this application is complete and it is consistent with what our requirements are for this type of development.
Yeah. Agreed. Agreed.
I mean, yes and no. I think one of the criteria is probably making sure that traffic is adequately accommodated. I don't know, just looking at it, I don't like, I mean, you technically, I'm looking at the site plan and you might be able to relocate Promenade Drive, you know, entirely on the north side, right next to those homes. But I don't know that that's fair to these residents either. You know, it looks like there probably is room to locate that right of way, you know, entirely on this property. But I also don't want to disproportionately impact, you know, this neighborhood to provide that connectivity either. You know, and that could be a backup plan, I guess, later. We don't have, you know, that would potentially be a, it's an outlot or a tract. I can't remember.
Trying to remember right here.
Yeah, that one right there. I mean, you could provide an alternate connection in there possibly. But again, then we're kind of impacting this neighborhood, I think disproportionately again.
But it's, it's the property north of that that we're concerned about. That's the unknown.
Right. That if they don't make the connection to the north, right, then we potentially have. I guess we do have a little bit of an opportunity, but I cannot imagine that, that those homeowners and that this, you know, that, that you guys are going to voluntarily come back and say, we'll build the road right there. So, you know, I guess I'm comfortable recommending that that be right of way and strongly recommending that it be constructed as, as soon as possible.
If this, if this proposal was for townhomes where they were getting the maximum number of units per acre, I would have very serious heartache on, you know, making sure. I mean, I'm already looking at it and, and thinking that it is going to be the issue is we've got to get Promenade built in the very near future, not, you know, hoping that it gets built in the next three to five years. It's got to be something that's a lot sooner and taken care of. So, you know, Stephen said, you know, there's going to be other proposals coming forward, but we don't know what those are yet. And, but based on the dwelling units in this proposal and everything that they've accommodated, going through all the staff notes, I think they've kind of gone out of their way to kind of help alleviate any of those issues.
And Stephen, with what you're seeing so far, are indications that we'll have opportunity or can we not even speculate?
Opportunities for Promenade to connect?
Yeah.
I couldn't say certainly. I mean, I, we've, we've looked at it as close as we can. We've assured the one access across the ditch company. I think it, I don't know that it gets any harder further to the east or, yeah, to the east. But it would have been a good opportunity to ask Jim when he was, when the public comment was open about- Yeah, and he's here. I know.
I saw him after. Yeah, I noticed that way closed.
But, so, yeah, I mean, we've, we've worked. They're aware of it. I'm anticipating that, you know, we've done everything we can to, to keep those viable. And I do agree with Commissioner Ritchie's comment that the most you can do at this point is to require it all to be right of way. And it's kind of similar to the, to the extension that exists within Coal Creek. Once you establish it as, as right of way, at least the expectation is there. You know, that the road will, will connect through. And the expectation is for all those property owners that they're going to be backing up to a, a right of way, not, you know, landscaped area that, that, you know, they'll come back and have concerns with once the right of way, you know, once it's time for the right of way to go through or once the board decides the right of ways needs to be built. So, and, and we did look at, you know, this other connection here. And it is trickier with the grates through there and it would, you know, impact a large amount of their residential units there. But it's maybe something that could get revisited should, you know, this not be able to go through as it is. And that shouldn't be, I mean, the board will have more of this information, you know, by the time they have to weigh in on it on the 23rd, so.
And I think, I mean, I, I do think maybe with, with us making a recommendation to the board, making our concerns clear. I mean, we are sort of passing the buck, that part of the buck on to the board and-
Well, we have to. We don't, it's not a part of this application.
Yeah, it's not a part of this application. So I'm, I'm- Yeah, I'm leaning towards being able to trust the process. It concerns me deeply. But, but I think that's the right thing to do. So there are some contingency desires that we, or at least some things we want to pass along to the, to the board in this, as we make a motion. Do we want to try to get those articulated?
Yeah, I was just thinking through-
Yes, yeah.
Condition maybe related to-
Yeah, so we have two different proposed resolutions. So it's going to be kind of two separate.
So the zoning change relatively straight forward, it's the, it's the development plan that we will have these-
Yeah, so the, the first proposed resolution is rezoning and the PUD amendment. And then the second one is the, the final major subdivision plat and final plat site plan.
So do we add the recommendations on to the second one? The recommendations will be part of the second one, yeah.
And I'll need to concern both the plat and the final plat site plan in order to get the updates consistent, so.
So maybe helping with the language, can it be as simple as the plat and the final plat site plan should be approved with right of way? Do we need to actually name the outlots or the tracts?
You can. It's Outlet A and Outlet D.
So a condition that Outlet A and Outlet D should be platted as right of way?
And developed on the final plat sheets accordingly?
Yeah.
Do you want to take a stab at that? Sounds like you have it.
Dan, can you read that back what, properly worded condition might sound like?
So I guess the motion would be, well, I mean, did you want to do the-
I'm just thinking just the condition at this point.
Oh, sure, sure.
Language for a condition.
Yeah, so this would be, this would be, I guess, Condition D, right?
Yeah.
And it'd be Outlet A and D to be right of way and update the plat and sheets accordingly.
Yeah, to be plotted as right of way.
As a right of way.
I don't know if we can add another recommendation, just that the Planning Commission strongly encourages the board to prioritize construction of Promenade Drive.
And connectors.
Yeah, and associated other connections.
Is that part of this?
It's just-
Of the site plan, of the plat site plan?
Just the best way. I'm just trying to get out there for the board.
Yeah, no, no. Yep, 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 yep.
Pay attention to.
Him, we could probably include it in both.
Yeah. So, I can make a motion for approval. Go ahead. Sorry, thank you. First one being, let me pull up the resolution. Moved to approve resolution for Town of Superior Planning Commission number PC-5 Series 2018, recommending approval of an amendment to the Rock Creek Ranch Plan Development to Rezone portions of tract E, H, I, and K. Rock Creek Ranch filing 12 from Regional Activity Center to Residential 1B with the conditions as proposed by staff.
Outlet, Outlet A and Outlet D?
I think that's in the next motion.
Oh, that's in the next one. Sorry. Okay, sorry. All right. A second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
And then, next one, move to approve Town of Superior Resolution Number PC-6 Series 2018, recommending approval of the final major subdivision plat and final plat site plan for Rock Creek Ranch filing number 12A. Lots 1 through 62, tracks A through G and outlots A through E with the conditions as proposed by staff as well as the condition requiring that outlots A and D are plotted as right of way. And the Planning Commission strongly recommends Promenade Drive being constructed as soon as feasible.
Second. A second?
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that concludes that. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Stephen, do you have any staff announcements or?
Yeah, real quick. So for, and I haven't had a chance to respond to-
Hey, could we, last minute, our meeting is still in progress. If you could have your conversations outside the, the meeting room?
Thank you.
Yeah, our meeting, it's still in progress. Thank you.
So I haven't had a chance to respond to Clarion yet. But they're proposing that we actually have a meeting on, I think the reason that she's suggesting the 24th would be a special meeting in lieu of the regular Planning Commission meeting that would be scheduled for the 17th because of, I believe, her perception that, that Commissioner Raco would be out of town. So they're suggesting that we schedule a special meeting on the 24th, two-part meeting. She believes in the walking tour. So we'll have a, a walking tour. And this is, you know, this is for discussion. So the suggestion though is a walking tour from five to six and then a commute to follow immediately with a community workshop meeting here at Town Hall from six to eight. So that's generally what, and then she's kind of outlined everything that they're going to be working on in the interim. Kind of both, both pieces is in terms of what EPS and, so Prosser, Matt Prosser and Chaney Bostic will be working on for the marketplace, kind of in parallel to what we'll be shooting for, for Original Town Workshop. And she's got it fairly detailed, which I should have pulled up here. But, and we can, if you want, and I can try to get my email and send it over here. But I was just really trying to give you guys an update and get your pulse on whether or not who's going to be available on July 24th for a special meeting and ensure that, you know, this is kind of the direction that everyone understood we'd be going in order to still try to get back to the board with recommendation in August, so.
I'm in.
We had talked about, you know, beers and brats at the park too. Is that outside of this? Is that we, I mean, I'm-
Is that part of the walking tour?
Yeah, I, just additional discussion with, with members. I think this meeting was-
Well, I mean, I think that that's possible too, if you want to do some, you know, separate kind of engagement. But this is what, I think she felt that, you know, we had a, a phone conversation either the day after or a couple of days after. And she felt that it didn't need to be prolonged, that we could certainly try to knock this out, you know, with, with one more focused meeting, you know, where we have kind of a breakout groups where we're meeting in smaller, smaller groups after we get back from those, those walks. And then kind of, just kind of got it outlined all here. Original Town Vision, part one of that meeting, that's 30 minutes, housing characteristics. Part two, that's the breakout groups. And then kind of group reporting is part three, where we come back together and then a discussion of potential tools and next steps. And then if we needed to have another meeting to kind of, you know, with Planning Commission before we go back to the board to digest and synthesize that information, it might be hard to gather and synthesize and come up with a recommendation alone on meeting. But I think that at least the gathering and the discussion could certainly occur on the 24th. And we'd have a lot better idea of where we want to go forward from there, so.
Yeah, I think that's good. I think that our, my suggestion, I think that we talked about was that as, that we're going to recommend this slow down as far as Original Town changes make until we can have more conversations and more directly engage the residents of this neighborhood directly. And that that would be a recommendation we make to the town board, that we're not suggesting that we take any action in Original Town until quite a bit more discussion is-
Yeah, and, and Martin and I had a chance to talk about it afterwards. Whether or not we slow down, I mean, that's totally up to you guys. This is your project. But I think the, I don't know that we need or really, it merits an update to the board until, you know, we get into August. So they, they were expecting something July, August. If, if we can stay on track after this meeting, maybe there's no interim update. But if we feel like this just is the start of the conversation and there's more that's required in order to have concrete recommendations, then at that time, I think we need to go back to the board and let them know that this is going to take longer than, than what we anticipated or at least that, you know, the Clarion schedule that was originally outlined, thinking this was all going to wrap up in the fall, so.
Yeah, I think in general, I mean, I, my, my expectation is that we would, at that time, we can update the board on whether we want to slow things down and have more conversations with Original Town. I think I'm okay with that. I'm on vacation next week and the 24th will be here before we know it. So I think having that meeting and if we decide we need to have some other update prior to the one from Clarion, before that, we can decide at that time. And I'm okay with that.
All right. Well, I'll send up, send out an email too, so we can get Commissioner Witty's availability as well. But it sounds like all you guys are-
So I'm available, but I'd ask that we just not go very long. I'm on a red eye the following morning.
Well, it's starting earlier, so it is suggested it start at five. We could start. So, yeah, that's the other thing is I'll, I'll check with you guys on times because, you know, walking tours at five sharp might be a little early. We might need to push that to 5:30 or something. Just, I don't know when you guys get off work. But, so we'll see. But that's, that's the general outline is 5:00 PM and then wrapping up at 8:00 PM. So that's around my bedtime.
Has there been any, any permits pulled or anything happening in Original Town with vacant lots? I just ask that once in a while to-
I don't know that there's been a permit pulled. I haven't, I don't know if I've gotten the permits for July yet. Not totally caught up on all my email this month yet. But I don't think that there's been a permit pulled. I know that we have a, we had the property on Second and Douglas. So, and there's a development application and the gentleman came in to show me, which was totally at his discretion to show me what he was proposing there. And it's a lot of stuff, I mean, I was very encouraged in terms of it's a lot of the stuff that, you know, we're, we're talking about the Northwest Area Plan in terms of grudge, you know, off the alley and, you know, buildings fronting Second and porches and all that stuff. So I think it's, it's a poster child for what we're, we're looking for.
Okay.
In terms of, you know, especially with what we have now, so. So, yeah, that's all I, I mean, I don't know that there's been a formal building application for that yet, so.
And Ethan Allen went vertical this, like, past week. All of a sudden, it was up.
Yeah, quickly, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
All right.
Hey, Stephen, one other thing, the, I got this notice left on my door from another resident about the Summit Academy Charter School, talking about that property down there. Has, has there been anything formally presented to the town on that?
I mean, no formal application has been submitted. I think there's been discussions, just, you know, about interest, you know?
Are schools allowed under the zoning there? I don't, I don't remember.
That's a good question. I haven't, I haven't been asked to look at it yet, so I haven't, haven't looked too hard at it. But it is, I don't, I can tell you off the top of my head what it's zoned. Charter schools, I think, are looked at a little bit differently than public schools. Public schools are exempt from zoning, so, but I'd have to look into all that because I've not had to deal with a charter school before. So, we're processing an application with a charter school, so.
Okay. Thank you. Can you, lastly, help me understand where we think, where things stand with the proposed rec center? They were talking about putting it at the sports table?
Um, I, I don't know about that either, so I don't know. Martin wants to respond. He's, he's more versatile than I am. I'm so narrow.
I just want to get caught up. These are questions residents ask me. Hey, do you have any Martin Tooth? I'm sorry, what was your question? Was it?
Well, what's the status or is there any status on the proposal of the rec center at the sports table?
Valid initiative.
Valid initiative.
So the next time the board's going to have the opportunity to explore whether or not to move forward with a community center ballot item and what it might look like, will be coming up at the next board meeting on the ninth. So when the agenda and the meeting materials are posted for the July 9th meeting, be sure and go through those and feel free to-
are posted for the July 9th meeting, be sure and go through those, and feel free to participate, it would be great to have you all there.
Okay, thank you.
But there's nothing said now.
Okay.
There's been one community meeting, and there are two more scheduled for July.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else?
Nope.
All right, we're adjourned.